Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, every-oney, every-oney, everybody, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, February 11, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. I just want to recognize from Troop 711, Sean Ryder. Hey, buddy. Thanks for being here. Scout, gonna see how we make the sausage in the city, so welcome, buddy. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Here.
Staley.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Kylie.
Here.
Nitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
All right. With us this evening to give our invocation is Reverend Nolan Ruby. He is with the Empire Baptist Temple. So Nolan, thanks for being here. I'd ask that you stand for that invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
All right. If you would, please, we'll pray. Father, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. Lord, thank you for the men and women here who have devoted such care and compassion to this city. Lord, as a lifelong resident, I'm personally very thankful for their endeavors. I pray you'd bless them this evening. And those who are here, Father, with things on their hearts, things on their minds, I pray that you'd help them. And this evening, Lord, I pray also that you would just give perhaps wisdom where we may be lacking, and understanding, Father, that we would bring honor to you, that we would be humble towards you, humble towards each other, and that we would truly love each other. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd ask Counselor Staley if you'll meet me on the floor. We have a presentation this evening.
Is this on? Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, there we go. Well, here we have Gary Tice. I nominated Gary for our superhero citizen award. And I'm just gonna tell you a few words about this guy. When Gary Tice retired from Old Home Bakery after almost 30 years of service, he became the guardian of our Van Epps area neighborhood. Can you hear me?
It's on. There we go.
Move, move.
Eat it.
Eat it. Okay. So when Gary Tice retired from Old Home Bakery almost for after 30 years of service, he became the guardian of the Van Epps area neighborhood. Gary has been the eyes and the ears of the 24th Street and Riverdale Park Road for many years. Gary is the constant kindly presence who helps others with snow removal, tire repair, and any need that arises. His big heart has been a gift to our community. There is never a stranger in the area when Gary is involved. Whether he is watering his lawn or sitting in the driveway with his beloved dog Snickers, he is always ready for a conversation and an encouraging word. His warm, friendly manner has made our neighborhood a safer, friendlier place to be. And I have a photo up here. Jim, where is our photo? This, Gary has been our snow angel. He goes, he has gone around with that snow blower and helped us immensely. Unfortunately, he suffered a stroke in the summer, and he's making a recovery, and we're hoping to have him back in gear soon, back home. So I'm so appreciative. We need more people like Gary Tice in our world. So thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
And we have a, we have a little certificate there for you. You know, some people would call this the nosy neighbor award, but Gary, Gary, he knows everything that's going on. We appreciate it, Gary. We miss you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Counselor Staley. Thank you, Gary, for being a model citizen in our city. Appreciate you being here. We'll move on with the rest of the business on our agenda, starting with item five, which is our consent agenda. Look for any motions or changes to that.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Sale. Any discussion, counsel? All right. We'll vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 11, which is our regular agenda. Look for a motion on that.
Move approval. Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion approved by Counselor Selberg, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right. We'll vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero as well. We're at the general public input portion of our agenda tonight. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total, lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on in the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes, unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. So at this time, I'd like to invite members of the public forward for public input. And clerk, please note our time is 7:08. Welcome. Good evening.
My name is James. How you guys doing today?
Good.
I want to say something, you know, and I've already talked to several people about it. First of all, the person, the nice young lady that got murdered was one of the people that worked with me. That was her best friend. And I understand the officers, because I've seen the officers, when they patrol the area, it's like two to three cars, okay? Now, my opinion is Sioux Falls is the biggest city in South Dakota, right? Rapid is the second biggest city. Pierre's the third. Sioux Falls is the safest place than Rapid. How I know this is I grown up in Rapid. I've lived in Rapid. Now, when, when we have felony convictions, you know, robberies or whatever, that comes first. When you call them, they will get to you. But the most important is, is we gotta be safe here. So I'm sorry, I've had officers help me out several times. I've had them actually come and help me push my car. And, you know, I didn't ask. So, you know, I just, I'm just so mad when I hear people saying, why don't they hear? Why don't they hear? It takes time. I mean, and I'm sorry, I'm, you know, it just makes me mad, you know, the way I hear it every day. I watch TV, I hear it every day, every day, every day, okay? I had officers come up to my place and say, hey, how y'all doing today? Because we had an advertisement, you know, eat free children, okay? But, and he goes, can I eat there free? And I go, yeah, sure, go ahead. You know, they do tremendous. And, you know, I've seen them. You know, I mean, yeah, there's some people that think they can, you know, you know what I'm trying to say? I'm just saying, you guys, just keep up the good work. And I'm sorry, I mean, I'm the kind of person that I will stop my car to help an officer. I don't care who would like it. And I have before in Rapid. I've done that before. Literally stopped my car in the middle of the road to help. Stop someone from running. That's me. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, James.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm David Sokitis.
Just turn the other way.
All right. Greetings. I'm David Sokitis, and I'm here to talk about making updates. Now, before I come here, I study, analyze, research, get help from other people, but sometimes I still don't get it quite right. So I have to go and make an update. And that is okay. So, you know, I make things better when I do that. So one thing I'd like to make an update on is my ideas on making a homeless shelter in Sioux Falls. Trying to figure out what the best housing option is. Do you want a tent? A hotel, a tiny home? Well, I think huts would be a really good idea. I'd like to thank Sierra for that recommendation. We found an article talking about how you might do that. So here are some cute little huts that might work quite well as a homeless shelter. Small, economical, warm, lockable. Lot of good, lot of positive attributes for these cute little huts. And here's a picture of one under construction. Looks like light, economical construction, perfect for a homeless shelter, and yet still quite warm, or so I gather. We'd have to give it a go before you give it a go. Another thing I need to make an update on is my previous presentation on storm water management. I had some information a little confused. According to my city resource, Andy Berg, development drains storm water at 80% of the rate of farmland. Slower. So that means that development decreases the risk of downstream flooding. I had it upside down. So now it's, now it's corrected. And I'd like to make a request for the city council here and perhaps the mayor. There's a couple of policies that need some updating because they appear to conflict with each other. We've got City Ordinance 30 addressing the council. That sets, that ordinance sets policy for this council meeting. And then there's the Executive Order 151 that sets policy for City Link. Well, which one's really in control? And I think you should just clarify that point for all of us, so we really know. And it's my guess that really the one that's in control is the city ordinance because that would allow the legislature to control the legislature. If the executive order is in control, well, then that allows the executive to control the legislature. I tend to think that's not the way it's supposed to work. And I got some help from a couple of people with this particular update. Next slide. Now, I always like to end things on a happy note, and here's hats off to City Parks Department, or maybe Public Works, because they saved some public art when they rebuilt a retaining wall. And with that, good evening, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Heather Pastor. Um, I was trying to brainstorm what to talk about tonight. I kind of want to follow up with what James was talking about. Um, you know, honesty, when I first came to this state, I was new. Nobody knew me. At first, the police officers, they really wasn't too friendly with me. That's till they got the chance to understand me and know how to approach me better. Um, you know, it's just like what he said. They only have so much time. They got, they gotta deal with, you know, people that are doing drugs. They gotta deal with all these robberies. They gotta deal with people being murdered. As he was talking about the woman from Hy-Vee. I gotta be real honest, when I saw that on the news and I looked on the web and I got a glimpse of that guy's face, he actually approached me one time at Hy-Vee. Thank God I had my fiance in the vehicle with me. I do like shopping, my EBT shopping at night. And he came up to try to ask me, I don't know if he was asking me for money or what, but I kind of looked over my shoulder and he just kind of like was hauling over my shoulder with his friend. You know, officers, I've noticed the ones that come talk to me, even though my neighbors don't, I don't know why the people want to call the cops unless there's a real reason. But every time I talk to an officer now, they're always nice to me. They always ask how me and James are doing. I mean, I got neutral respect for the officers, you know, they, they don't do what they used to do. I mean, I really, I'm sorry, but I'm getting tired of the cry wolf thing. If there's a real reason to call a police officer, call a police officer. If they're, if the, if the police officers was concerned about illegal massages and people having sex or people doing whatever, then I'm pretty sure they would go out and handle it. That's their job. They don't got time to be worrying about everybody's, oh, cry wolf, 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 let's call the cops because they got this, this, this going. They ain't got time. They gotta deal with people's doing robberies, drugs. They gotta deal with people being murdered. I remember when I was interviewed on Kellam for my next door neighbor, Sabrina White. Me and James were interviewed. We both was interviewed. Because we're decent people. We actually care. We're not, I don't know, I've been getting rumors, hearing things about people making slanders about me and James. That needs to stop. It needs to stop. They can only do so much. The officers will do, take care of real crimes. They will get to other stuff when they got the time. If they feel the need to go on something, they will do it. That's what they're paid to do. They're not gonna keep doing this cry wolf stuff. If there's a real criminal, a real crime going on, call the police. Otherwise, knock it off. Grow up. Grow up. Not y'all. People that do cry wolf.
Got it. Thank you.
Peace.
Good evening.
I'm gonna, I wasn't gonna speak.
State your name, please.
Sierra Bruce-Sard. You know, with these illegal massaging, people think that illegal massaging is just massaging without licenses. And I'm not gonna get involved in too much in depth in this, what's going on at these two illegal massage places. But this is a high priority. That is up with your robberies and up with your home invasions. Human trafficking by labor and human trafficking is an issue. It is a top high priority. Now, I've said it before. I might not know what's going on in the backgrounds with the Sioux Falls PD. But I'm gonna tell you this to set the record straight. With the evidence that I had, Homeland Security has picked up the case on these illegal massaging that people think that is just illegal massaging. These people are illegal immigrants held against their will to pay a debt. So we're not, when we talk about crime, when I go to Pier Two and we talk about sex crimes, it goes in one ear and out the other in the Capitol Pier Two, and I'm not getting it. It's always kept low-key on the down-low. We had 10 people in the court system and three people deported last year on massaging without a license. It is a big issue. There's more to it than people just massaging a body without any massage license. We have permit violations. They're not getting permits for certain stuff in the city. There's two of them right now. One is a licensed massage therapist. And then we have another one that's coming up in Rapid City again. That's, we have to set the record straight that we do not allow massaging without a license in the city of Sioux Falls because it comes with prostitution. It comes with human trafficking by labor and everything else in the book that I'm not even gonna mention because the stuff that's happening in these two illegal massages, because I've been in them, it's gruesome. So when people's gonna bash me for going against these people and these pimps and, and trying to rescue these people and putting a spotlight to the news media on these issues, it's because they need to be addressed immediately. We don't have time to wait. Five, six, seven weeks, a month, two months, or three months. The only reason why I'm not putting a spotlight like I did last year on the other ones is because I'm given a chance for law enforcement to act upon it. That's why I'm not bringing it on my Facebook page. But it should be coming out here shortly when they're finished investigating. I'm sure it's gonna be on the news. And I want everybody to watch it when it comes down and raids are gonna happen here for this illegal massaging.
Thank you.
Catherine Russell.
Good evening.
I've been here many times now, too many times.
Pull those mics down, Catherine, a little bit.
I need to clarify something. There's been some comments made, et cetera. I helped to change the infrastructure of the city years ago. Dennis Nelson, Janice, myself, Dennis Quigley, Mr. Staggert, Roger, and a few others. And we did good. We did so good that we even got the Bishop Dudley to open their doors so that the people could come in and find refuge. Mind you, these people did not show their faces in our city for a long time. Well, this is what we have in our city. When I started with our city, it was a Baraka House. For this gentleman right here. One of three. He wasn't accepted because South Dakota wouldn't accept medicine for AIDS victim, HIV people. This girl here, should our homeless coalition on our housing have done what they were supposed to do and not waste all that $184 to $185 million in the last 10 years, I wouldn't have been picking people up under the bridges dead, down on the curbs. Being beat. Being mutilated almost. And then when I came to these meetings and I cried, I had a couple people comment on my fact that I'm crying. This young man at the Baraka House, that was my son. And this girl right here, that's my daughter. She didn't have to die in the way that yous made it harder on her because of squandering money. I'm not a very happy camper. But I'll tell you what. When my Tina showed me these pictures and said, Mom, I got six months to live. You know I couldn't get there quick enough for my daughter? And you know what she did? She bled to death in the neck from all these bruises where she was kicked in the face and jammed on the ground with somebody's boot. I think you better do something better for the homeless people out here. And I'm getting a little tired myself. I'm 72 years young. I'd like to enjoy some of it. I've got five kids left. I've raised 27 foster kids. I've been on the streets all these 10 years. I did do my job. Dudley House didn't have the right workers in there, so they shut the doors down, called the cops, had everybody arrested, trespassing and all. Then the courts asked me to come in and help them with that, too. I am known. I am good. I'm a good person. Better hope someday this don't happen to your kids. What would you do? Isn't that what Christopher Bruce was saying?
Thank you. Good evening.
Tim Stanga. This last big snowstorm we had, I had about four or five elderly people call me up and ask me if they had anybody that would help shovel. Absolutely nothing. No help for elderly people. The ones that brought this city to what it is today, we just throw them up against the curb. We don't want to help our elderly people. What we want to do is we want to throw them in, in homes, and we want to throw them in assisted living so they don't have a house to live in. I think that it's time that we appropriate some money to be able to help our elderly people, whether it's mowing yards or shoveling snow. There's no reason why we can't. I was driving down East 10th Street today, and you can check the who was down on East 10th, filling potholes. Didn't blow them out, didn't clean them out, took a scoop of tar, threw it in the pothole, and just drove on. Never tamped it down, never did anything. Find out who was on East 10th Street and pull them aside and tell me that they're gonna do it right, or you're, you're gone. We'll get somebody that will do it right. There's no reason why we have to fill potholes 10 times. And I wish that we could keep track on every pothole that we fill on every street to figure out how much the citizens of Sioux Falls waste just on one pothole a year. I know everybody's gonna come up and march and say how bad of a winter it's been, and it really takes a toll on our roads. You know something? We haven't fixed them. Anybody can put a little tar in a, in a hole, not tamp it down, and then come back two weeks later and put the same tar in again. You might as well just throw the money up in the air and let everybody grab it, because that's what we're doing. We could put gravel in a hole and we'd be happy. We go out, we got people that trim trees, that are cutting trees down, ashbore trees. They drop them in the street, and then they tell the neighbors that when the street cleaners come through, they'll clean it up for you. Now, why isn't it that they don't have to clean up their own mess? I've had complaints on that, too. Just drive down the streets if they're dropping trees on and see how much they pick them up. And then we came out with a study on trimming trees. $680,000 to do it for Project Trim. Why don't you put, put a bid out there? And they'll bid it for $200,000 to $250,000 to do the same thing that the city bid, and you'd probably get a better job.
Thank you. What else this evening? Come forward. Good evening.
Hi, Stephen Ciano, Sioux Falls. I was at a bus earlier and somebody noted he saw me on TV. And I encourage others to speak what's on their mind, because I often have. People might see me and ask me to say something to improve bus service or about apartments or treatment of mentally ill and others, other things. Well, I already have spoken on such things with regard to myself and other people, and it apparently has fallen on deaf ears. I have written letters, emails, and asked that they be published publicly. And I understand they may have heard or alarmed some people with my manner of presentation. And actually, I'm just speaking of things must be made public. We have a mayor that ran on transparency. And I've been speaking of accountability. I've dealt with different levels of government, different organizations, public and private, who have conspired to conceal my disability, disabilities since 1978 in other parts of the country, as well as here since 2002. And that includes city entities, but there is no oversight. And I don't see where anyone's being held accountable. I don't think that if I, having been fraudulently declared delusional incompetent when I had an already pre-existing diagnosis based upon records and clinical evidence that I had PTSD compounding Asperger's, that this should be making people think that I'm not, my word is not to be trusted. While I may say things that may offend some, I feel that we still need to shine a light on various entities. I was denied food stamps when I had been deprived of any income for years and denied my needed medical care and other services through a conspiracy began with the Navy and the VA. These things are local, false community health, and then the city human relations. I've complained and haven't seen anything accomplished. And I worry for my for myself and others who are dying as a result. I was expected to die. I managed to set up something whereby I was able to survive, and I am here today to do better.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening for public input? Come forward, please, sir. Good evening.
Attorney counsel, thank you. My name is Matt Klinger. Stopping in this evening, wanted to address an issue of, like, another gentleman just brought up the potholes and, and street issues. Only reason I wanted to bring it up is a couple Fridays ago, driving for work, doing my maintenance duties for the job I'm at, and I came across an intersection of Haven Hill Drive and Centennial Lane, 5,000 East blocks of both. These are a couple of pictures I had taken. Unfortunately, it was after drill weekend with this last snowstorm, so the holes had been filled with the snow, but I just put like twenty-five hundred dollars into fixing my Suburban, and the bumpers were, front and back were about seven hundred, total paint and everything. But going through that in a slow turn, fell into that hole, and I ended up breaking the front bumper, 'cause it fell down into the, enough to put pressure up on the bumper and cracked them. So wanted to bring that up and to see if there's a way of addressing it, or if there's a program of reimbursement on repairs of a vehicle, 'cause it was like three weeks literally after just having all this work done. So this is quite a bit of money out of my pocket that would be nice to have back for malnourished or maltreated roads, I guess you could say. So I guess I'd appreciate you guys' time and consideration on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening for general public input? All right, let's move on. Clerk, to our next item, please.
Item thirteen, second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing a provisional one-time supplemental appropriation for expenditure of police overtime pay for 2020 special events.
Mr. Mayor. Counsel Erickson.
Thank you. Counselor Knightzert and I will kinda tag-team this presentation that we will go through. It will be brief, and we are also happy to answer any questions that you might have in regards to something that maybe we don't cover. This ordinance was reviewed and signed off by three different attorneys through some changes that we have made to the title as well, to include the provisional one-time supplemental appropriation in that title to really mock exactly what we're doing for, mimic what we're doing for the snow removal as well. So some background on this proposal. This is in regards to the special events ordinance in Chapter Ninety-Six. The city council had an informational meeting on November eighteenth, at which time this proposal was brought forth. At that time, we did not have any language, but we did have the proposal, the presentation brought forth. The current practice right now is that traffic and school resource officers are taken from their daily duties to work at nonprofit special events and flex those hours. The administration proposed a seventy-dollar-hour cost recovery fee on special event groups, including nonprofits, to fund overtime pay for officers instead of flexing those same hours. At this time, many counselors expressed concern about how, excuse me, how this seventy-dollar-hour fee could impact our volunteer-driven nonprofit special events. The timeline has since passed, has come and gone with an implementation date of January first originally set forth. If you can go to the next slide, please. Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
Both administration and city council proposals fund overtime pay for officers, but they simply differ on who should pay. The question is, should our volunteer-driven nonprofit events, such as St. Patrick's Day Parade, airshow, Cinco de Mayo, hot Harley Nights, and others, be required to pay for police overtime? Our city council proposal is that we recognize the economic and quality of life benefit provided by these events, and we would propose to supplement the 2020 budget for three hundred thousand dollars. Just looking at our, our finances right now, we budgeted for a reserve balance of about fifty-three million, five hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars, or a thirty-one point five percent reserve balance at the end of this calendar year. Our actual estimated fund balance, which comes from our city council budget analyst, is closer to fifty-seven million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is a thirty-four point seven percent reserve. So we have well over our reserve target and well over what the city administration had projected. Even with using this three hundred thousand dollars, we would still be at a thirty-four point five percent reserve, which would be well over what we had projected for the end of this calendar year. The proposal is to take three hundred thousand dollars of our unobligated fund balance and authorize that for the expenditure of police overtime pay for special events in the city. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone from the public who should speak on this topic tonight? Please come forward. If anybody else is here to speak, come on up to the front so we can keep it rolling. Good evening.
Tim Stanga. I'm on the mayor's, I'm on the mayor's side on this one, because why should the citizens be stuck with a bill that the nonprofits put on? We got enough crime that the cops can't keep up with. We got drugs coming from California that we can't stop coming in. We can't help our elderly people stay in their houses, and we're talking about three hundred thousand dollars for special events. Yes, it brings in revenue. I, I get tired of listening to that, because it'd bring in revenue if they hired their own people to do security. And when it comes down to Jazz Fest, it wasn't because of the security, security that shut down Jazz Fest. They had a lot more problems than that. And everybody on this city council knows that, but they won't admit it. It is not security that put Jazz Fest on the, hopefully, they still have it, but it's not because of security. I know that everybody's made up their minds. I know they don't really care about our elderly people, and I know they don't care about, is it cheap living in this town? I talked to a lot of people. When you gotta go to a restaurant and pay ten to twelve dollars for a cheeseburger, that's not cheap. That's expensive for an average person. Our taxes keep going up every year. What it does is it pushes our elderly people out of their houses, because they can't keep up with it, because taxes go up higher than what they're making on their retirement. It's about time we start thinking about the people, everybody in Sioux Falls, instead of the nonprofits, instead of the people that tell you how we want you to vote, or we want, what, what we want you to say. There's about time that you guys have to speak for yourself and speak for the citizens that voted you in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Ciano. Britain circuses, is what I say. Smoke and mirrors. I've spoken of them before. It's a, it's a distraction from what is going wrong that this body has the power to fix. A lot of us are harmed, and people are distracted for the most part. As long as their bellies are full and they got something to keep them occupied, they will often miss the more significant things that affect their lives.
Are you gonna speak to this ordinance?
I believe I am, speaking on this. This is a distraction, I believe. Okay, this, the money should not be put for police to support these distractions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else to speak on this? All right, we'll, let's get a motion on the floor, and we'll move into our discussion.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Knightzert.
All right. Motion approved by Erickson and seconded by Knightzert. Discussion, counsel. Counselor Steely.
I'd like to call Police Chief Burns forward, please. And Chief Burns and I had a conversation before the meeting started, but I, just, just for historical reference on this, a year ago, or give or take a few months, Counselor Starr and I brought forward an ordinance, or ours was actually a resolution, allocating five hundred thousand dollars for pothole repair, because we were told at that time that our workers doing the pothole repair were stretched very thin. So we wanted to supplement that and hire maybe some extra staff to help. And at that time, we were told, it was early in the budget season, and it went down in a six-two vote. Starr and I voted to do it, and my colleagues voted that we didn't need to do it. So, and at that time, Mark Cotter came up and said they could handle this, this cost, that we're, we're gonna be able to financially take care of the pothole energy needed. So I'm asking you to come forward, because to me, this, even though I, I think this is a great effort, I, I'm opposed to raising fees for these nonprofits, but I just wanted to ask you financially how this, how your budget's looking for taking care of this overtime issue.
Certainly. Police Chief Matt Burns, thank you for the question, Counselor. So 2020 is a little bit unique in that there's not an airshow, and Jazz Fest has indicated that they're not a player this year. So that does significantly, significantly reduce the exposure we have to overtime costs to do this. We do believe we have the room in the budget for that lift, but there's always the eventuality that we might not. So we absolutely appreciate the funds being available. This, this council has a long history of supporting public safety in a wide variety of ways, and this is a natural extension of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Counselor Knightzert?
Let's take the pothole versus a police overtime issue head-on. I, I just have a statement, so I won't, I won't, you can say if you want, but I won't, I won't need you. So, thanks. I just don't wanna have you stand here if you don't need to. Last year, the pothole supplement of five hundred thousand dollars was brought forward. At the time, the street maintenance budget, we had ninety-two percent of the budget left, nine million not spent. Of that street maintenance line item, that is what pays for filling potholes. Ninety-two percent of it was left in that budget line item. The administration told us they had plenty of money. They had plenty of money. We, we made it very clear. We figured out it wasn't about the money. It was simply a time issue. Six crews were going Monday through Friday. They were going twenty-four hours a day, three crews on the weekends. It wasn't time. Weather was the impediment. It was one of the coldest on record, thirty-three state days below, thirty-three, thirty-three straight days below thirty-two degrees. The intent of the street maintenance budget is fixing potholes along with other street maintenance projects. The police overtime supplemental avoids using funds appropriated for hiring of new police officers. We're talking about increasing the line item for overtime. We set a budget, and we said we want wages to be used to be, to put police on the streets. We want you to hire police officers. I don't want you using overtime and not being able to hire police officers. This is for the overtime. That is the distinction.
Any other discussion, counsel? Counselor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm excited about this ordinance, and I, I plan on supporting it. I think that our role as a council is to set policy for our city. And the policy that I see set forth in this ordinance is very clear. We, as a council, do not want the nonprofit organizations that bring economic development to our community to be charged for a public service. And we committed at the, I did at least, committed at the informational that we very strongly disagreed with bringing this forward as a way to charge those groups at whatever amount. And for me, it's not about the overtime amount of money that's going to be used or not used. It's the policy decision that we set as a council and a legislative body. And like I said, I believe that that policy decision is very clear in this ordinance of what we expect. We do have some issues to work with. Morale is an issue with our police officers. And that's not what we're talking about tonight, unfortunately. Chief Burns was here at our last meeting and told us, we're twenty-six FTEs short. He doesn't have anyone to work overtime. He's going to have to continue to flex people to cover these special events. What I'm looking for is a policy from the administration and telling us how we're gonna fill those twenty-six FTEs. That's what's gonna fix morale with our police department and our officers on the street. They can't take time off. They are forced to work overtime. We're covering our streets, and they're doing the best they can, but they're short officers all the time. That's the real issue that we're not addressing tonight. I'm glad we're setting a very strong policy statement of what we want in our city, but at the same time, I'm looking for someone to step up and say, how are we gonna fill those twenty-six FTEs? And we're not doing that. And we haven't heard anything that's going to do that. We have a training class that's starting. We should be in peer. We put it in our legislative priorities and said, we need the training facility, the training academy in peer, to take more officers so we can hire them. That seems to be the bottleneck, from my point of view. Why aren't we demanding that our governor open up more training spots? You talk to other cities across the state, and they're having the same issues we are. Brookings can't hire, you know, I spoke with the, the mayor of Brookings. He said that they can't fill spots, because they can't get the training spots in peer, in the academy, that our, that state law requires. There's more here tonight than arguing about whether we filled potholes or didn't fill potholes, or whether or not we have enough money for overtime for our officers. This body will never stop and not have the money. If the chief comes to us and says, we need overtime money, we need additional staff. We talked about it during our budget hearings. We said, we're adding four new officers. But guess what? We're not gonna get them hired before the end of the year. We can't get them trained. We can't do, we're gonna continue to run short with the officers that are doing the work. That's the discussion we should be having tonight. I'm gonna support this ordinance, because it does need to move forward. And we do need to set the policy. But the time we should be spending is talking about how we're gonna fill those twenty-six FTEs.
Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the initiative of this ordinance. I think it's been a subject that's been out there for quite a while, and it was a little bit kind of adrift. I, and I appreciate the fact that I think it supports a lot of what the administration was talking about and bringing about, and some of the goals with it, too. And I, I think that's what I've kind of asked the questions about, is that it's supporting this, it's a one-time effort, and that some of the things that have still been talked about, whether it's a task force to talk about this further, to continue the effort to improve this program. I think this supports that, and I believe that I was told last time and through my conversations with both counselors that it does support that. So I think it's been a good discussion. I do appreciate the initiative. Chief Burns, if I understood you correctly, when you were up here, you supported it. Was I correct?
Yes, we identified, we identified a gap. We brought it to the council, and this is the resolution. We're very appreciative of the provisional funding.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other discussion on this? Counselor Brackey?
Matt, sorry to run you back up here. I, I'm, I realize I'm kind of re-asking the question, but I'm, I'm confused, because as a council, as the body as a council, we can't direct how you move the funding around in your budget. We can simply give you budget, and you can decide as, you know, how to meet the needs of the department. So do you have sufficient funds in your department to cover this cost for this year without this supplemental appropriation?
I believe we'll be able to manage the budget responsibly, as we have, certainly since I have been chief in before. This, this provisional funding, if needed, will be very helpful, and we're grateful for it.
Touching on what my fellow council member just talked about, the twenty-four FTEs that we have to fill in this year, and we know, quite frankly, that we can't get that done. So, you know, basically, what that tells me is while this feels really good, what we're doing, we're programming money for something that there's already funds to cover, and then we're not programming, this money could be programmed for something else. So within your budget, within that, those twenty-four FTEs, again, knowing that we're not gonna be able to fill them all, there is sufficient funds to cover the needs of, I guess, the wishes of the council to, to utilize the police force in this way. Am I clear on that?
Yeah, I believe that we have the funding, and we can, we can do it through our current budget this year.
And then I would also ask, that we're at the very beginning of this year. Your budget has just started. If we were to run short, we could make this supplement later in the year. You could come to us and let us know. If we, by some miracle, we get all twenty-four FTEs filled, or, or are there other ways, you know, that you manipulate your budget, that you can, you're in trouble and you can't accommodate this, you could come back to us, and we could appropriate it more towards a, you know, three-quarters of the way through, or two-thirds of the way through of this year?
Yeah, I'm confident that if, at some point, that a supplement came necessary, that I could come make my case before this body, and you'd give me a fair hearing.
All righty. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Erickson.
Jim, if you could bring up slide number three. I don't have any questions for you. I just have a few statements. At our council budget hearing on August thirteenth, it was stated that these four patrol officers are needed to keep up are needed to keep up with growth and calls for service population to manage response times responsibly. This council appropriated the funds for those officers. I'm not willing to take money intended for officers and push that into potential overtime, just a little bit into this budget cycle. I'm also not willing to accept the status quo, and I'm grateful for the leadership of Chief Burns, to be looking at things outside the box, to be talking with our Attorney General, who is in charge of making sure we get the first seat at the table for those first 12 officers so we can get them on the streets and going right away. There's also talks of a fourth class coming forward in Pierre if they can get the funding. Now, that's a big if. We know how difficult it is to get the legislature to approve those fundings. They know they need a fourth class. There's also additional talks that Chief Burns is exploring things, and he is having those conversations, that we have a, a new facility coming at some point. Boy, it'd be nice to have some opportunity there. He is looking and understands those challenges statewide. When I was in Pierre, I got to talk to the Attorney General for a while and met with him and begged and pleaded and said, you have any openings at all, please call Sioux Falls and give us first rights. We need those seats, to get those seats filled. I appropriated the budget. My vote was for those officers and to manage the crime that is taking place. If we can skip ahead a couple of slides, these are just some crime statistics that are on the decline. We have a great story to share with a lot of things declining. The next slide are the increases. This is staggering to me. We've got to get those officers hired. I'm not willing to take those officers off the street and flex their hours to put them off the street, take them out of schools. We have to focus on these statistics. We have to do a better job in getting those officers hired that I'm not willing to take those monies away from the police department if they can get those officers hired. That's my preference. Let them focus on getting those officers hired, and let's set the policy that we want to pay overtime for those officers for time and a half. It was communicated as well, back in, if you could go one more slide, it was communicated during the, the conversation of, hey, should we take these officers off? Can we leave them? What, what can we do? I'm paraphrasing now. And what happened was is, we don't have the money. There's no overtime money that, but we support it. It's really a philosophical question if the overtime monies are supported by this council. Do we ask the city, ask the event organizers, event attendees to pay the cost recovery, or put that burden on all the taxpayers through an overtime budget increase in the general fund? It's complicated. It's really the question, do you want to take officers off the street and flex them? Do you want to put money in for overtime? I am not interested, and I know the wage savings is a strategy that has worked. That's not what I voted for. I voted for you to hire every single one of those officers to keep up with crime and keep up with growth, and that's my vote.
Any other discussion on this? Counsel Staley?
Just to circle back with the pothole issue, I, I do believe that the two are parallel because we have been very generous and responsible for needs that, that happen within our city government. So, if you were to come to us with a need financially to pay the officers, I, I know we would be open to, to doing that. I, we brought the pothole issue forward because we were hearing from the mayor that we were supposed to bring cookies and help these pothole guys because they were being so stretched so thinly, we thought we needed to give a little energy, just like this, to say, here you go, we're going to help you out. That's, that's within our realm as council members. We control the purse strings. So, I'm hearing you say you have the money, I'm going to, I will vote for this. I'm hearing you say you like having it on, on hand in case you need it, which is exactly what we wanted to do with that pothole issue, is to say, here we go. And also, just so the public knows that this was presented in information, I believe it was, what, what month was that? Yeah, so after the budget had been passed is when this came up, this whole issue. From what I heard from the public, it, it did not, it didn't sell well with them, that we're going to charge $70 an hour for the St. Patrick's Day police presence. So, what's interesting is we had that informational, which that happens at four o'clock on a Tuesday, where they just kind of brief us, and then it's disappeared. So, we don't even know, if we didn't even bring this up right now, it's really not on, it's not on the table at all, is it? When we, we haven't had a first reading. So, financially, if, if Counsel Erickson and Counsel Neitzert hadn't brought this forward, would you be in financial peril?
No, I don't believe so, but we would continue to discuss the big picture with events and how to responsibly manage them going forward. That's a late discussion we need to have.
And, and that could be a budgetary discussion, because we've already, we've already determined we're not going to have those big events this summer, the airshow, Jazz Fest, but that could be built into the next year's budget.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, so it'll be kind of remedied. I, I would hate to see a task force come forth and say, make a recommendation through some kind of long discussions that say, well, we've decided that we're going to, we need to charge $70 an hour. I, I think what the public, what I'm hearing from the public, and Mr. Stanga, sorry, I'm not agreeing with you on this one, but I'm, I'm hearing people say, these are good things for our community, let's, let's get the money to pay these guys. And, and also legislative priorities that we put forth, we did vote as a council to say, we want the state to open up more classes so we can get these guys trained. So, we, we've been on top of that as well. So, sorry to make you stand up there and...
I think we're ready to take a vote on this one. We have more, more input. Is anyone's mind going to be changed? Go ahead, Counsel Brackey.
Thank you. I guess one of the other issues that I know the whole council is concerned with is morale of the police department. And I've, as this overtime issue evolved, I've heard two different schools of thought on it. If we, if we do this and we supplement the budget and we remove, you know, continue with the path, or if we, if we don't supplement the budget, we continue down the path where our, our resource police officers and our traffic patrol officers are the ones that do these services, that's, that's the status quo. And that's unacceptable because it's creating not pleasant jobs because of the, the way that their, their shifts are manipulated around. But if we do this and we, we supplement this budget and the, the current practice, am I understanding, the current practice is to do it kind of through a seniority, and at the end of the day, when you get to the bottom, somebody has to do the overtime. So, and oftentimes, it's the younger employees, which in this day and age are the ones that would prefer to stay home and have some quality time with their families. So, regardless of which way we do it, which way we administer the overtime, having overtime is creating morale issues for our, our police officers. Is that correct?
Well, I've heard that too, but it kind of depends. The, the events overtime is a different kind of overtime. It's, it's, you sign up for it, it's during the day, it's, you know, it's, it's an entirely different overtime than being hired back to work a, a patrol shift. So, there is a different point of view there. I, I would say that we are going away from the flexing model. I made a command decision as, as the chief that we are going to go not flex for events anymore. It's just too hard on the team. It creates those gaps. The, the logic that I brought forth at the informational is, is what I'm standing here and repeating to you. We are going away from that flexing model, and I believe we can take care of that inside our budget. But we have the provisional if, if we need it, and we're, we're grateful.
And, and is that, do you have the support of the police department on that? Again, one of the things I was struggling with is I'm hearing two sides, but because we're in collective bargaining right now, you know, we've been instructed that we can't communicate with the police department. So, I would like, for me personally, it would have been nice if the FOP would weigh in on what their thoughts are on this. Do they have a preference? You guys are at the table. Where is the FOP on this issue?
Well, I won't speak for the FOP, but I know that my events team will greatly appreciate not being flexed and have to, to work weekends and being taken out of their primary roles, and that is the SROs, the park officers, and the traffic officers that are the events team.
And, and, and so the way that you're going to do it, are you going to spread the overtime out then so it won't just affect these, this, those particular groups of people, but it will be spread, spread throughout the entire department?
Correct. Correct. They'll, they'll have first, first chance at it, the, the events team that works that now, and if there are insufficient officers to cover the needs, then that will be spread out further within the Uniform Services Division.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Neitzert?
I'll defer.
You're good. I'm covered, yeah. Any other discussion then, Counsel? All right, let's take a vote on this item, please.
Counselmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley? Yes. Brackey? Yes. Erickson? Yes. Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 14, please.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising section 95.071, recreation activity and facility fees of chapter 95, Parks and Recreation.
Hi, Jackie.
Good evening. Jackie Nelson, Administrative Manager, Parks and Recreation, here to talk to you again tonight about ordinance 95, fees as it relates directly to parks and recreation. So, within ordinance 95, what we're looking to do is update fees that are no longer applicable as well as fees that are currently not in ordinance. So, overall, just some pretty much just general maintenance as we look at ordinance 95. In terms of removing, we're looking to remove the Sioux Falls Ice and Rec Center as well as participant fees for programs that are no longer being offered. And with additions, we're looking at adding lighting... Lighting of the Falls, which has been a previous oversight, as well as establishing fees for facility use of the Levitt Shell. Majority of this presentation will focus on the Levitt as that is the, the largest addition within this ordinance. So, as it relates to the Levitt, we all know it's a state-of-the-art professional outdoor event venue located in downtown at Falls Park. It was a $5 million investment. That's a partnership between the City of Sioux Falls, the local friends of the Levitt Shell Sioux Falls, as well as the National Mortimer and Mimi Levitt Foundation. So, again, the Levitt Shell is a three-way partnership with the city owning the property, but it is the home venue for the Levitt Concert Series. As we look at the Levitt Shell and the facility use options, the first priority goes to the Levitt Shell Sioux Falls. They do have 80 programming days between May 1st and December 31st that they can program. After they select their 80 days, then it is open for Park and Recreation City programming to allow programming for public activities and events. And then the third priority would be for public special events to be able to use the facility, going through the special events process in terms of how we currently do special events today throughout the city. So, whether you would, you know, have your event at the Levitt Shell, or you'd have it at Yankton Trail, you would always go through that special event process. As we looked at fees for the Levitt Shell facility use, we compared it to a lot of different venues and locations similar in size to the Levitt Shell. I have three of them listed on the PowerPoint for you. The first one is the Levitt Arlington. This is the Levitt facility that the National Levitt, or the National Levitt Group would say we mirror the most. So, in terms of seating capacity, it is designed exactly like Sioux Falls, seating capacity of 5,000. Their rental fee is 300 up to 6,500, but they do also charge for applicable permits, sound and lighting, and other fees. Pine Wood Bowl is located within Pioneer Park in Lincoln, Nebraska. That too has a similar seating capacity at 4,000 seating, or sitting up to 5,200 standing with a rental fee of a minimum of $700. So, it's $100 per hour, minimum six hours, $100 application fee, so you're looking at at least a minimum of $700 to rent the Pine Wood Bowl. And again, they also do charge for permits, sound and lighting, other third-party fees. And then finally, the other one I have on the screen for you is the Simon Estates Amphitheater in Des Moines, Iowa. The seating is a lot less, it's only 1,200. However, the venue is very similar in terms of the fact that it is lawn seating. This would be a 550 four-hour time block with $100 thereafter for free events, with $800 for a four-hour time block, 175 an hour after for fee-based events. So, a little bit different there is they structure theirs for fees, free events versus fee-based events. And they too have applicable permit, sound and lighting fees as well. I would say with those three facilities, a lot of them function and run very similar to the Levitt. The Levitt Arlington does not have the public restroom, so if you're renting that, you actually have additional fees there where we do. And then, as you can see, the Des Moines, Iowa is pretty limited as well in terms of the capacity and capabilities that it offers. As we look through these venues, we did meet bi-weekly with the Levitt Group, our local Levitt friends here in Sioux Falls, to talk through the different facilities as well as fees that we would potentially all be comfortable in charging. In terms of fees, we're looking at basing it off of attendance, so starting at 600 for attendance of 1 to 499, all the way up to 3,500 for a group of up to 5,000. This would be for renting the Levitt Shell. That includes the shell itself, the stage, as well as the lawn. And then again, those third-party fees would be applicable. So, depending on the permits that are needed, if there's professional sound and lighting that would need it, additional restrooms, trash, things like that, barricades, there would be some additional fees that would be charged to those event planners. Sound and lighting would run through the Levitt. And with that, I do have Nancy Helverson here with the Levitt Shell Sioux Falls to help answer any questions. Park Board did approve this on January 29th, and our staff recommends approval. And with that, I'll take questions.
Thanks, Jackie. Appreciate it. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this topic tonight? Counselors, do you, you would like to speak, ma'am? Come forward.
Catherine Riffel again. I'm not keen on killing the ice skating areas and stuff like that. Our young youth needs it, and I feel myself personally, from the research I've done on our city and all, that we certainly can afford to keep them open. If you can afford lifts and all at the ski place up there on the hill, you certainly can keep some ice skate rinks open, which is nothing but the ground and the ice and the water. And maybe somebody to come along and squirt the water like I saw the other day. So, for what you're going to do and all with the Levitt and everything, go for it, but keep those skating rinks open. People need them besides.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this topic? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jackie or Nancy? Counselar Starr?
Yes, thank you. Jackie, a couple of questions. First, to answer her question, the reason we're removing the fees for the Ice and Rec facility is because it doesn't exist anymore.
Correct. So, the Sioux Falls Ice and Rec Center no longer exists, but we do have the Shell's Ice Plex.
Gotcha, and those fees are taken care of in a different way. So, we're not eliminating any ice, or we've eliminated that ice a long time ago, so. Did you look at what there would be, you compared to what other facilities charge, but what cost do we have as a city for using these facilities? Obviously, the construction, the, the original part of it, but are there ongoing fees if a group rented the Levitt for a day, or the, the area for a day? Is, are there, was that taken into consideration of what that would cost for cleaning or extra staff that it would take as part of that rental?
We did. We looked at it from not only the maintenance perspective, so the park operations team, so the team that's coming in and getting the grounds ready, whether it be, you know, making sure it's watered properly, fertilized properly, just making sure it's, it's a nice lawn for a venue to take place on, along with maintaining the restroom. So, you know, who's going to be supplying the toilet paper in the restroom throughout the event, things like that? So, we did look at it from both a park operations perspective as well as a Levitt staff perspective. If they, if we need to have a Levitt staff person on hand as well.
The other quick question that I had is, is there a potential for partial days? Or if it's one of the Levitt's days, would they consider a, a lunchtime time program or a morning program or those type of things? Or do they need the entire day blocked out for their activities and their concert that evening?
Yeah, so they have, and Nancy can speak to this too, but they have the 80 days that they have first priority over. So, depending on if they're going to have one or two concerts, it may or may not be an option. Also, depending on the act, when that act would need to come in to set up, that may or may not, you know, kind of buy up or take up some of the time. But ultimately, what we would do is if it is a day that the Levitt has reserved, we can always work with the Levitt to see if there's any potential to make the two fit together.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Counsel Kylie?
When I'm looking online, when I look online here with the ordinance, it, it mentions the use fee by anticipated attendance. So, is that fee actually charged upfront before? And my question, then, that leads me to my question, so let's say they anticipate less than 500, but they end up getting 1,500. I mean, we've had some Levitt concerts that did exactly that this year. So, is there an adjustment made in a situation like that?
There will be an adjustment made, yes. There will be an adjustment made, yes. So that's part of with having the park operations team on staff and going through our special event process, we will be monitoring the attendance very closely, and we will make an adjustment based on what the final attendance is.
And can you also address concession proceeds and percentages from concessions?
Yeah, at that time, we don't have any concessions built into our fee structure. As we look at building this out over the next few years, we may add a percentage to that. But for now, they would just work through the special event application to work with their food trucks or their concessioners, and then, you know, get the proper permits in place and be able to raise money for their-
Okay, so no percentage to date anyway, going to the city. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Jackie, council? All right, look for motion on this item.
Move to approve?
Second, Selberg.
All right, motion approved by Kylie and seconded by Selberg. Any discussion, council? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move on to item 15, please.
First reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations for the Entertainment Tax Fund, Washington Pavilion, 355,000.
Councillor Knightsert?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to defer this item to March 3rd.
Second, Starr?
All right, motion by Councillor Knightsert to defer to our meeting on March 3, seconded by Councillor Starr. Go ahead, Councillor Knightsert.
Just for the benefit of the public, we had one item on the informational that went really long, and we were not able to get to the item that would have gone into detail and explain this item to us. So we're going to defer this so that there's time for us to have an informational, have it explained and digested, and that's going to be at the end of February. And then we will have the first reading on March 3rd. So that's the reason for the deferral.
Okay. Any other discussion, council, on that? All right, we'll take a vote on that motion to defer then.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 16.
First reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations, highway and streets, 1.7 million, fire, 3.3 million, and parks and recreation, 1.125 million.
Good evening, Sean.
Good evening, council. See you again. Speaking this evening in regard to the supplemental request that is before you in, for use of the available balance from the sales and use tax fund. We had a extensive conversation at the informational earlier today, both about this particular topic, but also about our sales tax results for the city of Sioux Falls in 2019, as well as some updates on the bonds. So for those of you watching this from the public, I would encourage you to go to the city council's meetings website. And if you're interested in those topics, you can certainly check out the informational, as well as what I think was a good and robust conversation in regard to this topic and Q and A afterwards. So I'm going to try to keep my comments brief, so I don't repeat myself too much. But for the public purposes, I will try to hit the high points here and then be turning it over again to the directors to discuss some of the various items that were coming before you and asking for your support for moving forward. So again, tonight what we're talking about is the sales and use tax fund. As we get into talking about the available balance here, just again, a reiteration for the public, the fund that we are talking about, sales and use tax fund, is essentially our capital fund. It is a separate bucket in our city where we deposit the second penny sales tax, and it is directed specifically to infrastructure projects, bricks and mortar, as long, as well as long-term equipment. So we are not talking about operations. We are not talking about filling potholes or snow removal, or any of the things that fund our general operations for our city. Strictly talking about bricks and mortar. And this is funded by that second penny. It doesn't include funding from the property taxes as well. As we discussed earlier today, we did have the benefit of having a lot of available balance building up at the end of 2019, which we kind of rolled through today. But the one thing I do want to reiterate here is a major benefit of that was the additional sales taxes that we did receive over and above what we had originally projected for this year. That comprised about 40% of what we anticipated, or 40% of the available balance that we're going to be talking about here tonight for the sales and use tax fund, or about 3.3 million was generated by that sales tax activity above our budgeted projections. Most of the other items are related to what I'd say more one-time or market-driven changes to our available balance. 1.6 million came from cash flow change and how we handle our debt service after we refunded the 2018 bonds. 800,000 came from de-obligated projects from the 2019 year. We carried forward 300,000 from 2018 into 2019, and we continue to carry forward into 2020. And then 400,000 in miscellaneous other. We generated $900,000 in interest income from our cash accounts, whether that's pooled cash for this fund, as well as our reserve funds that we hold in trust as part of our bond payments. And then $800,000 with mark-to-market adjustments. These are pretty much non-cash accounting transaction that we do for our bonds and for our investments. And we covered that in quite detail earlier today, so I'm not going to repeat myself on explaining those particular provisions. What I am going to speak a little bit about is where we sit for our available balance after the end of the year. We haven't presented our financial, end-of-year financial statements for the department yet. We'll be doing that in early April. However, we have a good read on where we will be with the available balance for the sales and use tax fund. And with that, we have various proposals that are being brought forward for the possibility of expending some of those funds as an investment for infrastructure in our community. Part of that recommendation is to enhance our existing reserve within the sales and use tax fund. We did carry a small $700,000 reserve within that fund to hedge against market adjustments. And we're making a request, given the amount of available balance that we had for this year, to boost that to 2.4 million. As we discussed earlier today, the intent of this was to hedge against market trends, be prepared for weather-related events that may come our way, as well as headwinds that are coming down the pipeline in terms of where the economy is going, potential indicators that are out there. We're hedging against some cash flow within this fund that we discussed in detail today as well. So the proposal was to enhance that reserve fund by 1.7 million. That equates to essentially the interest income and the market adjustment that we had to our investments, which is primarily US Treasury notes from the US government that we held. And taking those funds and setting those aside as a fiduciarily responsible thing to do in this time period to hedge against some things that could be occurring over the next several years, provides an opportunity for us as a city to take advantage of any reductions. If we have reduced sales taxes in the future, we still have the opportunity to keep up our investment and stay full steam ahead on the infrastructure investments that are needed to keep our community growing. So with the next slide, these kind of just talked about some of the things we talked about earlier today in terms of why we're proposing to bring these reserve funds up a little bit as far as the sales and use tax fund. And if we go back to this slide, you can see that we still have $6.5 million even after investing additional funds into the reserve to make a very significant increase into some shovel-ready projects that we can move forward with over the next year or so. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Director Carter. He's going to come up and talk about the highways and streets proposal for additional investments there.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I will cover our recommended investments of the surplus dollars directed toward the roadway system. As Sean alluded to, there was extensive discussion at the four o'clock today, but did highlight that the street system is the city's largest investment. It has a value of nearly a billion dollars. We have a strong program in 2020, and this will allow us to make even a bigger impact. We've got three different areas that we would target. 41st Street, between Western and Minnesota, is timely investment. It's also with the improvements we're making at Western Avenue and 41st Street, that's a complete intersection reconstruction that's already been bid. It's about a $4.4 million project. And then down by Staples at 41st and Minnesota, there's a new right-turn lane going in. Both those projects nicely bookmark this milling overlay. And this milling overlay was initially done back in 2011. We've gotten nine years out of it. We expect that this milling overlay will get that as well. Highly traveled street. We almost have about 24,000 vehicles on that road a day. When you round that up to a year's traffic trips, we almost see almost 9 million traffic trips on that segment of road every year. The $200,000 would expand our slurry seal. The IMS study, that we've got some initial results back. We'll get the full report in March. They highly recommended we expand our slurry seal program if possible. This would allow us to add another 80 blocks. And then the last is additional tech creeds, a more permanent concrete repair. We're already doing a fairly good-sized project downtown. This would allow us to expand that. What this means in blocks, so the asphalt milling overlay on 41st Street would allow us to do an 11 additional blocks. The slurry seal dollars would allow us to expand that program from 400 to 480 blocks. And then the tech creep project, the way we pay our contractors is by the pound. That material goes into a hot box by the bag. This would buy another 25,000 pounds of that material. All right, a couple of videos to demonstrate this. This is the corner at Staples. That's where the right-turn lane will go in if you're eastbound to southbound. As you look at this road, you can see almost every one of the concrete joints have reflected through, and we're really starting to see, once these overlays start to go, they go quickly. Our streets crews are spending a significant amount of time out here trying to keep those potholes filled and avoid property damage from the cars. So this is a, this is what we believe is a great candidate, again, also with the bookmarked projects of the right-turn lane at Minnesota and the full reconstruction of that intersection at Western and 41st. And then this slide, this video just essentially shows you how we normally do this kind of work. 41st is too busy of a road to close, and so we usually do this half at a time. And so this gives you a sense of the segment we did last year on 41st Street between Western and Kiwanis. There's two lift system, there's a leveling course, and then there's a final course. You can see where the cars are driving, the condition of that prepped pavement. A lot of faulting, a lot of patching that's been previously done. That would essentially be the same look of this section once we mill that old section off, and then get it ready for new pavement. We talked earlier about expanding the slurry seal. This picture and this drone video is pictured here in this neighborhood. We shared that with Councillor Staley earlier today. Just really trying to find a neighborhood without a lot of canopy, but we've done this surface treatment through and across the city, in the core and in the expanded area outside the Beltway. And it's a superior product to chip seal that we switched over from years ago. Property owners really like it because it only affects their block usually for less than three hours. And it really gives a good durable surface for those streets, really seal them up again. It's investing in good roads. And normally, we don't have to do any additional treatments for another five to 10 years. And then last, this is the tech creeds, very labored intensive. You have to first prep those spoiled concrete joints. And then this is a very hot material, but it's a superior material that bonds very well and gives us a more permanent patch instead of putting asphalt in some of these faulted joints. All right, that's what I have for you. Up next is Don Kearney with Parks and Rec.
Thanks, Mark.
Good evening, Don.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about the supplement for Parks and Recreation. Really involves two projects. One with the chairlift replacement at Great Bear for 800,000, which would be combined with $200,000 that the Great Bear Board has agreed to provide in private funding to fully fund a lift out at Great Bear. And then we have a couple smaller projects in Terrace Park that really speak to some historical structures that are in Terrace Park that we would like to rehab and make look new again. So we currently have a current trail, chairlift system that essentially obsolete. Parts are essentially no longer available for it. They typically have to be manufactured and custom-made. And so it's served us well over the last 40 years, but it is time to replace it. The updated system would provide, you know, the new safety features and technology that any new piece of equipment that's 40 years newer would have compared to the one we have. Much more comfortable for the loading and unloading experience. If you've ever been at Great Bear and rode the lift, it can be a challenge, especially if you're a novice skier. And that certainly helps those with disabilities that, working with the program that Dan and his team have out there with people with disabilities, it's been a great program, and more and more people become interested in that. Certainly, reducing the lines and wait times on the lift will be a key component of a new lift. That's one of the challenges we have because of the number of starts and stops because of people not being able to get on efficiently, especially those younger kids that I talked about. And then obviously, ultimately, we're just trying to get more people for more time on the ski runs and less time standing in line. So here's a picture of the current lift as we know it today. Again, it's approximately 40 years old, and there's only about four, I believe, left in the United States, according to Dan. And then here's an example of what a new lift might look like. Not necessarily that particular brand, but it's something that we'll bid out, and there are multiple vendors that provide these lifts, and they have to be custom-made. So depending on that RFP process, we'll ultimately get a new lift that'll look something like this. As it relates to Terrace Park, we have a couple of projects, like I had mentioned, the lion's den. We want to do some facade tuckpointing, replacing the missing stone that I'll show you pictures of. We'll want to stabilize it to avoid further deterioration of that, you know, 135-year-old structure. And then also stabilize the doors and windows on that facility. And then as it relates to the Japanese gardens pergolas, the actual cross members that go atop of the pergolas, they're actually in pretty good shape. But the upright columns that I'll show you, we've lost some of the aggregate that's on those columns that we want to essentially remove, restore, and then put back in place. And essentially, they'll look like new when we put them back in. So here's some, just some pictures of the existing lion's den. That is, this is the west side of the lion's den. This happens to be the north side of the lion's den. We also are now looking at the pergola columns where we've gone in and had a mason do some, basically just some shoring up of those pergola columns where some of that aggregate has fallen off. And then this is one of the areas where some loose stone that we're just trying to tuckpoint to a certain extent until we can get these facilities replaced. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to present both of these items. I think they'll be a great investment in our park system. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Goodroad to talk a little bit about the fire station.
All right, thanks, Don. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Councillors. Again, this is a little bit of a repeat from this afternoon for the public benefit. But I'm here to talk about the impact and the importance that Station 12 will have in this plan. So paying cash for the station allows us to stay on track for construction in, again, here in 2020, and to be completed and the station opening in May of 2021. We're planning to budget for 15 new firefighters to begin their cadet academy in January of 2021, with the graduation in May of 2021, to provide that staffing for the station. We're expecting an ISO site visit about the same time and have the station constructed and staffed to allow us to maintain our ISO 1 rating. Keeping the station on track also is necessary to maintain our response times to priority calls in Station 12's territory, in that southeast part of Sioux Falls. We're also saving close to $1 million in interest expenses by paying for this now instead of having it to the bond. Here you can see the growth that's occurred at the Station 12 response area from 2002 through today. So we believe similar to providing infrastructure such as roads, power, water, sewer, that's also important to maintain a fire and EMS coverage as a city grows to provide the same level of service throughout the entire city. Here's a rendering of Station 12 as planned. It will fit very well into the neighborhood of 41st Street and Faith Avenue and provide fire and EMS coverage for this area as it continues to grow over the following years and for the decades to come. So now turning it back over to Director Pritchett.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Just closing out, we'll talk a little bit about the timeline. Last Monday, we had an opportunity to release some of the information in regard to this proposal and the details that were going to be included in that. Want to thank the councillors that reached out with some initial questions that you had. This, of course, is our first reading tonight, so with the consent from you, we would move forward to second reading. We look forward to the opportunity to continue answering questions that you might have in regard to this proposal this evening, but also over the course of the next week, to make sure that you have the information that you need to make a good decision in regard to this request. Also, on the docket for next week, moving to second reading, we would also bring forward a resolution that would amend the capital program for each of the projects that the directors and chiefs spoke about tonight. So with that, I think we'd be happy, any of us, to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thanks, Sean. First off, anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? All right, Councillors, do you have questions for any of the directors? I'll start with Councillor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Kearney, a quick question. I think this got touched on a little bit today on the informational, but... So on this Great Bear and the chairlift, I think the fundraising on their side has been a bit of a challenger concern in the past. What is their timeline? What is their timeline to raise their share, and what happens if they don't? I mean, I think he, one of the gentlemen got up today and addressed that a bit. I wasn't quite sure if he said they had it already or anyway.
Yeah, their timeline is really November of this year to have it in place. I actually talked to Steve and Dan earlier this week. They're very confident that they will have that when we need it. And the nice thing about Great Bear is they have a line of credit that can also draw upon. If they happen to have pledges or whatever, they can have some interim financing to make that happen. It's critical from their perspective that we move forward with this. And so I have complete confidence to be able to pull it together.
And worst-case scenario, if it didn't?
Worst-case scenario, if it didn't, I think we'd just have to, hopefully we'd know before we got to November that that was coming. And then obviously, we'd want to have additional conversation with them and also our team about that as well.
I'm sure they will, just wanted to ask, thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Other questions? Counselor Seale?
Yes, for Chief Goodroad. Chief, if this is approved as outlined here, shovel on the ground and completion for your fire station, could you give me some timetables?
Sure, if this is approved here, on the second reading, I think we have a bid opening would be March 5th. And then the March 17th consent agenda, mayor approves it on the 18th, and then be ready to go from there. And then the finished construction would be May 1st of 2021.
Thank you.
Counselor Staley?
I'm going to reiterate what I said this afternoon at 4 o'clock to Director Pritchett, that I'm so grateful that you were listening, and our mayor was listening, last year, about this time when we had our first city council budget priority session, where as councilors, we got together, and we're going to be doing it again in two weeks. But we got together, we brought ideas to the table about what we'd like to see funded in the budget. And the way it's worked in the past is that the mayor's administration puts the budget together, and then at the very end of the process, the councilors get the budget. And we try to, I've always used the analogy, it's like trying to take a plastic knife and cut into a piece of cement. Once the budget is put together, it's very, very difficult to move things around. And the department heads have some ownership in that, they don't really appreciate us messing with it. So it's been my, a lesson I've learned in four years is that it would be the ideal thing if we have the input on the front end, so that we can mix that into the concrete and we don't have to try cutting it up with a plastic knife. So that being said, there, our mayor did put out a beautiful video, and many of the people, I think everyone who spoke today was featured in the video on YouTube about all of these projects. And I think as council members, we should be doing some of those YouTube productions as well, about things that are important to us. I may be doing that. But anyway, it was, the mayor said at the end that he garnered support or input from council members. I wasn't consulted on that, and I've heard from two of my colleagues who also said they weren't consulted on that. So there has been, I think, a lack of communication on this. And I'm excited that we're going to be talking about our budget priorities in a few weeks, which to me is a timely thing before we're cementing in some other projects, which I think some of these have great merit. I would, I do have a question for Director Kearney or Kelby, if you, maybe Kelby was the one who gave us the information. But if you would come up for a minute. One of the things that I will be bringing forth when we talk about our priorities is this idea of having the city take care of the trees on the Boulevard. And we said operationally, and I think that the first penny would be spent about $650,000 a year is what your estimate was to trim the trees.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Kelby Maris with Parks and Recreation. And yes, Counselor, it was about 300, or $650,000 for...
So that doesn't apply to what we're talking about. We're talking about capital money here. But you did mention that there was going to be an initial investment, which the Argus heralded as millions of dollars spent, which is a one-time expenditure. I think it was 1.8 million, but I think you're talking about hiring six new full-time employees. And then there was also some equipment you were going to hire, or not hire, but buy. Am I right in that?
Yes, it would include two new crews of six full-time employees total. And the equipment to outfit those crews and additional space to store the equipment came to about $1.8 million. Of course, that equipment, after its useful life, would need to be replaced to continue the program.
Right, but that would be at a capital expenditure.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so if I, we're talking about this extra second penny money that we're being presented with here, I could present my desire that we take some of that and use it for that startup cost on our tree trimming program, right?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Council? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. Actually, it's not a question, it's just something that I failed to mention earlier this afternoon when I was discussing fire station number 12. At that, at that point, I said that the advantage of appropriating for the fire station 12 now is it's just going to open sooner. And that's especially important with the opening of Ben Rifle Middle School directly across the street, so it coincides with that. Another advantage I had mentioned then was cash versus a bond. Obviously, we're saving money by doing that. And also, we would save in construction costs, too, with the ability to actually start a project maybe up to a year earlier than otherwise, waiting for the bonding effort to run its course. But the item that I forgot to mention was the emphasis on our ISO rating of number one that we have presently in the city of Sioux Falls. As we continue to grow further beyond Veterans Boulevard, that just increases the distance and the gap that exists between the new residences out there and businesses and schools and churches, and separates them even further from existing fire stations, which potentially risks that ISO rating of number one, which then impacts everybody's insurance rates in this room. So it's important that we maintain that ISO rating. And so again, I think, as I had mentioned earlier, I've been advocating for this since I came on the council six, nearly six years ago. It's been kind of on, it's been off, it's been on, off, and I'm glad that it's on and it looks like maybe it's going to stay on. So I'd like to vote on this as soon as possible, quite frankly. Thank you very much for the efforts. Chief?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Knightser?
I just have a few questions for Director Carter.
Yes, Counselor.
In terms of roads, we're going to get the IMS data soon, which is the drive of the...
We drove it last fall, and they're still pulling the data together, but we should have the full report in March.
So in a perfect world, we would have the IMS data. I don't know if you've seen preliminary data, you know, to, so we know kind of where the roads are. But you also have bid letting, and we're getting into a time where you're probably going to want to start moving it forward. And if you get too late, they're going to be booked up and all that. So where are you at on that? I mean, could we, what if we waited until we had the IMS data? Let's just ask that question.
Well, you know, absent the IMS data, we still get, you know, we still have a very capable staff. We still get a number of C-click fixes. We, you know, we, we have a good pulse on the road system. And when we look at some of our top priorities, 41st Street is in the highest category of vehicles per day with the condition that it's in. And so, and we also know where we're directing our pothole patching crews. And so we're going to see some probably complimentary data from the IMS information. But that's, that's more of a broader discussion on where do we slurry seal? Where do we mill and overlay? Where do we reconstruct? You know, this would be, this would be very timely to invest in 41st Street and then also have the book-in projects that I talked about at the intersection, at both intersections.
And when you go to do a mill and overlay, do you prefer to do something like you've done here, where you've repaired the curb and gutter, you've replaced with ADA ramps? Because some places, we're still continuing to put in ADA ramps. So is there synergy there, or does it...
Well, that's, that's what's perfect about this one, because we were, we were pulling this project forward, so we've already done all the ADA ramp upgrades. And so, and that's usually what's some of the most time-intensive and costly. We can spend anywhere from $8,000 a corner. And then not only cost, but time, all that work is done. And so that's, we've been planning on bringing this one forward, and it's a, it's a good timing to get it done.
So if you had another major road where the ADA ramp still had to be addressed, would you, just engineering-wise, is it easier to do the ramps first and then come in and do a mill and overlay? Or can you do it in the other direction, or does it...
It's best to do all your concrete work first.
Okay. And then another quick question, when you're talking about the slurry seal, you know, all of us, I'm sure, I have a whole list of roads I could give you, you know, that would, I would think. But, you know, how, how damaged can they be and take a slurry seal? For example, if the road is, the asphalt is starting, I guess the word maybe might be spalling and it's cracking, and, or you have some stuff, I mean, so does it need to be pretty pristine, or can it be damaged?
No, we've, we've done a number of different strategies. Like last year, we absolutely lost 33rd Street, just with the high moisture content from two different years. We went in and we excavated the real bad frost soils, we call them. And then we came back and did a slurry seal over the top of it to kind of seal up the top. We've also gone into some, I'd say fairly rough, concrete roads and done, and put two layers of slurry seal down. And it's been, and it's worked and held good. We've tested it on a number of different, it doesn't have to be new. There's just some times where we may have a project that's coming in three years, but we just, we need more time on that road, and so we've done slurry seal. You know, you can cover, you can cover so much ground in a short time. You know, we'll do, we'll do 400 blocks in about five weeks. And so, you know, there's a whole crew that preps, there's a whole crew that removes striping. And then after that, once everything's clean, those out-of-town contractors, they work expanded hours to get the work done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my questions are for Director Pritchett. I didn't get a chance this afternoon to, we ran out of time before we got to it. So I've got a list here if I could. Talk to me a little bit about where we're at closing out the year. One of the things that you mentioned this afternoon during your presentation is that we, you made, these numbers are estimates yet, that were, I mean, they're pretty solid, I can imagine. But really, we're not going to have the year closed out until the end of March? Or was that the audit time you were talking about?
The audit will be presented to the council or the audit committee at the end of March. But we're actually ahead of where we were last year at this point. So as far as the sales and use tax fund, we, we put quite a bit of time into this particular fund because we knew with the fire station and everything that there's a timeline factor that we needed to come forward with. So we're very comfortable with the number that is being presented as the balance. We may have a couple payables that come through, but it's going to switch a couple of upper numbers between an expense and a restricted account. It's not going to change your bottom line. So very comfortable with the, the numbers that are being presented here.
Okay. Take me through the fire station decision. Who, who made the decision to take the fire station out of the capital improvement budget and put it into the bonding process?
It was a conversation we had as part of pulling together the capital plan for the year. A major key driver of that really was the potential for the Jefferson High School. So we had a high school that was being determined, and its location was decided after the capital plan from the prior year, before we brought forward the, the capital plan that we brought forward last year. And as part of that, we became aware that our commitment as a city to making sure that we had good access to that and safe access to that new high school was probably going to be upwards of $6 million, and that wasn't programmed in at all. So it really was about trying to find the right fit for those funding, for the funding that we needed for that project. And as part of that, we thought, you know, there's an opportunity, we have bonded for a fire station before, that there would be an opportunity to put it, to include it with our public safety bond.
But if we put it with our public safety bond, if I was listening to you correctly this afternoon, we're going to be behind.
Behind from the respect of, yes, the design is taking a little bit longer for some of those bigger pieces of it. So the public safety, I mean, that is the big piece, the public safety training facility of that bond, as well as the River Greenway. So as this has come together, then, you know, this, this fall and into the winter of 2019, then we began talking about adding the PSAP to it. And so there was kind of all this layering that was going on. And when we finally have gotten to design and through the agreements to get design going, that, that has delayed things a little bit further, as opposed to, you know, we have some opportunities that we could have passed the bond ordinance, but not funded the bond to this fall and still included in cash flow that fire station. But with the amount of funds that we saw come available as a result here, it just, as a fiduciary responsibility to the community, it just made more sense to pay it in cash.
Perfect. That's enough for now, thanks.
Counselor Knightser?
I, I did see that Steve Sanford of Great Bear looked like he wanted to come up. So if, if he still wanted to address something, I'd invite him up to, to do so, thanks.
Evening, Steve.
Very briefly, I'm Steve Sanford. I'm president of the Great Bear Management. I'm a founder over 28 years ago. And we are the nonprofit, no-charge manager of the area and have been for that long. 28 and a half years ago, I made a promise with Mayor White looking me in the eye that I would never let Great Bear be an embarrassment to the city, all right? Now you can look me in the eye, right? Because I'm looking you in the eye. And I personally promise you that when the $200,000 is needed, it will be there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Counselors, do you have other questions for any directors? Do you want to put a motion on the floor and have some discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to set a second reading for Tuesday, March 10th, 2020.
All right, we have a motion to set a date of Tuesday, March 10th.
Second.
All right, and a second by Staley on that. Discussion on that, Council?
I just, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
We were rushed through this. We were rushed through this afternoon. We weren't allowed to ask all the questions that we had because we ran out of time. We've had some times this evening, but there's more here to do. I think Counselor Knightser did a nice job explaining that waiting for the IMS data is important. I think waiting until our financials are audited and having a, a look at where we're at, and then have the, the ability for the public to do this. This was presented to us this afternoon at 4 o'clock. We're being asked to vote on it tonight and then rush through and vote on it next week, so we can ram it through. This needs, this is a large commitment for our community. And yes, I believe there was a lot of discussion and a lot of time put into the presentation on behalf of the administration. The council just happens to be left out of that discussion. We've had to rush through our questions and try to get them answered as quickly as we can to get things done and to move things. This will not slow us down by waiting until March to allow the community to have an opportunity to weigh in and to actually move forward, other than just in social media and the things that we can do. We can have a legitimate conversation and ask questions. And sometimes the best questions are actually asked and answered long after you have a chance to think about it. By 4 o'clock this afternoon, I haven't had a chance to shower yet. That's where most of my best questions come from. You know, I'm going to need a couple of showers probably to get through $6 million worth of expenditures. And we're not in a hurry. These are extra projects. You know, one of the, part of the discussion this afternoon was also, what is shovel-ready? You know, projects that take years to, to materialize aren't shovel-ready. And they certainly can wait a couple of weeks to actually be discerned and have a chance to take a look at them. There isn't a rush here. There are things that, construction timelines, but we do slurry seal, we bid it by the block. We don't bid it by the project. A lot of the things that we're adding are in the ability that they, we just have a general price for. So we can add these things. We add slurry seal at the end of the construction season all the time. The other activities can be bid. We're already moving ahead with the fire station. Chief Goodroad told us that they'll have bids in by March 5th. That means that they're probably already out for bid. Again, haven't had a chance to look to see if they are, but I'll bet they're already being bid, and it's not going to slow the process down. We can slow down and take a quick breath, get the audited numbers, let the... We can slow down and take a quick breath, get the audited numbers, let the year come to an end and finish the, the accounting that we need to do and look at this in a, in a meaningful manner rather than ramming it through.
All right, any other discussion, counsel, on that motion? Counselor Erickson?
Just a question for Counselor Starr. Just, I understand what you're doing and I appreciate that. I'm just curious why March 10th, if there's a reason or if that's just the date that?
It's the second meeting in March that gives us our chance as a council to have our budget meetings that we're having at the end of the month and then still have time to consider it. I would be okay with the third if that was more appealing, but I was looking for enough time to, to do our due diligence to ask the questions that we need and to have a chance to take a look at it.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate the explanation and I would like to see the IMS as well. It's not that I don't doubt anything that's gone on or that's brought forward, but it is our opportunity to kind of weigh in and see where we as a council body wants to appropriate the money. Earlier, we heard other council members say, we hold the purse strings. Well, we do. So are there things that we want to do or not want to do? I think that there's probably unanimous support on this council for, for getting that fire station ready and through my one kind of hesitant of voting for it for that long is if there's support for the fire station, do we want to just pass that through and delay the other items? I don't know. I'm just kind of throwing it out there as a philosophical question that it's, it's pretty evident that this council supports getting that fire station moving quickly and then taking those other items separately. I, I don't know the best answer for that. I just don't want to slow the fire station down.
Counselor Selberg?
I appreciate the request. I would be fine with the third though. Gives us a couple of weeks, kind of a happy medium in the middle. It's my two cents.
Counselor Sale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Starr, I appreciate your sentiment and I had those same sentiments and I still do to a certain extent. But I had great conversations with Director Pritchard last week about this whole process and about these things. And I've had great conversations with Director Kearney and Director Cotter on how these things. So I reached out to them and, and found the answers that I needed to have. I still have concern that it is very quick for a huge amount of money. The one thing that I really wanted to hear from today was the people from Great Bear. And they made a very coherent and, and presentation that I could understand on, on how that $800,000 was shifted back and forth. I, I will tell you, as a member of the council, I'm not very happy about how that ended up. The phone, you know, one day they're swimming along, the money's going to come out of the city budget and the next day they've got to raise $800,000, not set up to do that. And I appreciate where we're at today to do those things. I would, I'm not prepared, I am not prepared to slice the fire station out and defer the rest of it. But if that's what we need to do, depending on how this motion goes out, if, if the motion to set for March is not passed, then I would come in with a separate motion to approve the fire station and defer the rest of it. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Erickson?
Can I just follow up on that? And I don't want to put words in your mouth. I just need to, I guess, say it in my words and you tell me if I understand you correctly. So if we were just to pass this to next week, two second reading, and then at that time we can decide next week if we want to just slice the fire station out, vote for that, and then essentially we'd have to just cut the other items, bring those back for first reading. Is that how I'm understanding it? And that would still put it on that March 10th timeframe with a first reading the following week?
Correct. Counselor Starr?
Yes, I just, to answer your question, Counselor Sale, I think that's one of the most frustrating, I say that all the time, I guess, I'll take it back. It's a frustrating thing that I can get answers, but Mr. Stanga can't. You know, the public doesn't get a chance to answer those questions. They get their answers to their questions when we deliberate. And that's the frustrating part for me is that I could get those answers and we did get some of them answered through the process in a very informal way, but the public hasn't gotten those answers. And that's where we get in trouble because we deliberate as a body, we do things behind the scenes, we have meetings, we bring projects along, but we don't bring the public along with us as part of it. And that's what gets us in trouble. That's what frustrates them because they don't get the same information and enough time to digest it. And that was the, the original part of it. And to answer your question, I'm excellent with moving forward with the fire station. I think the rest of it needs more explaining. We've beat the fire station to death for 10 years that it's been in our CIP program. There isn't a doubt that we need it and there isn't a doubt that it should have been just like a tree, we should have planted it 10 years ago.
Counselor Erickson?
Would it be acceptable for a friendly amendment to, to make the motion to approve it for a second reading for next week and then next week, those decisions can be made again if we need the additional time or if we want to amend out additional items?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the item for Tuesday.
Well, actually, so we have a motion and a second on the floor for March 10th. So you can amend, make an amendment?
I'm doing a substitute motion.
An amendment to the motion?
I'm doing a substitute motion to the amendment, yes. So I will make that to Tuesday, February 18th for the second reading.
Okay. Do we have a second for that then?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Sale. So again, we're basically back to voting on this for next week and then have a second reading next week at which time you can decide to slice out a piece of this if you see fit. All right, is there a discussion in the council on that? Counselor?
If, if we follow that route, if we, and I'm in favor of moving the fire station forward, but if we decide then next week to vote on only the fire station, I believe that would require the rest of this to probably come back as a first reading again and, and really start all over from, from scratch, which we, we could actually amend everything out in number two, except for the fire station and move forward and they could bring back first reading right away next week with the rest of it.
I don't think we can do that on first reading though. You have to do it as second reading.
Oh, that's, I think you might.
This is just a note. So, Mr. Mayor, if I can just chime in one more time, if we, if we do the main motion to have the second reading next week and say amendments are made at that time to pass it as is, to only pass the fire station, whatever, we do have to bring those other additional items forward again, but it could be brought forward on February 18th for a first reading and a second reading would be March 3rd, which is still quicker than the March 10th turnaround. So I don't know which way, I'm just want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Tom, I do agree. And Tom, you can nod your head that I, I do believe Counselor Erickson is correct that we can't amend something out during a first reading. It would have to go to the second. Is that correct? It is correct. So, yeah. Ditto what you just said, Counselor Erickson.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to move this entire item to a second reading next Tuesday, 18th. Counselor Knightzert?
I don't know that we can solve this now, but I also wonder if we go to amend it the second reading, if we're going to have it deemed a substantial change and have to delay it another week. So just food for thought.
Mayor? We'll have a week to discuss that.
And my thought is that the substantial change is not an addition. In this case, it's more of a deletion. So I don't know, I think to me that it's not as substantial as coming forward something completely new.
Right. Counselor Staley?
I'm going to make a motion to defer this whole thing to March 3rd.
We get, what's?
This is a substitute motion.
A substitute motion isn't a thing. So we can amend the motion, we can amend the motion on the floor, or we can vote on this motion, which there's a motion on the floor for next week. So you can amend the motion that's on the floor to defer?
To defer to March, okay, I'm going to amend the motion to defer to March 3rd.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Brecky.
Okay.
And I'll speak to that because it sounds like we're getting into a whole bunch of garbly goof.
Yeah, I'd like to start voting on a few of these because?
March 3rd isn't going to kill the fire station project.
I'm going to take a vote on that then. There's an amendment to move the amended motion, which is for next week, to March 3rd. So we'll take a vote on that.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Knightzert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
No.
All right, that passes five to three, so that entire item is moved to March 3rd. Next item.
Item 17 is a resolution declaring the necessity to construct sidewalk on West 57th Street and assessing the costs to each lot or tract of land benefiting thereby.
You're on, Chad.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chad Heavey with the Engineering Division of Public Works. Item 17, 18, and 19 are sidewalk items that we discussed at last, last week's informational meeting. The first one here is 57th Street from Western to Minnesota. And so during a project this summer, we will be completing the sidewalk installation on the south side of Minnesota, of 57th Street between Western Avenue and Minnesota Avenue. If you look at the map up here, everything in green is where we have sidewalks installed to date. So you can notice that on the north side, all the sidewalk is in. On the south side, parts of the sidewalk are in, but then you see some areas in blue and some areas in yellow where we do not have sidewalk. So tonight is the resolution necessity to construct the sidewalk in accordance with state law and city ordinance. The actual assessment of the sidewalk cost will happen after the work is complete and all the numbers are tallied. And the three, this resolution includes these three parcels and there's two owners. And I would answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thanks, Chad. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, you have any questions for Chad on this? Look for a motion on this one?
I have a question.
Counselor Staley, go ahead.
Chad, like, what are we talking about the expense to the homeowner in general?
The estimate, we're required by state law to include an estimate in the resolution. And so the estimate that we have given is $40 per running foot.
How much?
$40 per foot. And so for the parcels up here, parcel one, the estimate is a little, a little over $9,300. Parcel two is about $6,400 and parcel three is $4,100. Now, just keep bear in mind that we try to give a very conservative number, the worst case number. And so that, but the actual number they're assessed will be what we actually pay the contractor to do the work.
Can the homeowner do their own?
Yep, they are, they're given two options. The first option is they, where they can have us do it during the project or they can have it done by themselves, hire a private contractor. And then if they choose us to have the city do it, then they have a couple options. We can either assess the costs on their taxes over a period of time with interest or we can just send them a bill directly and they can pay us within 30 days.
What kind of interest is that?
You know, it's the, I'm going to say it wrong, but it's, it's a, it's a set rate by ordinance. It's a, it's a, it's a certain percentage that's set probably by the federal government, then a little bit added on to that.
Is that the same amount that we would have like for an assessment of annexation property? Remember, we were having, I think that was, Counselor Knightzert might remember, wasn't it like 5%? The interest rate that we were talking about with, with these people coming into the city? I think it was five.
I don't recall. I don't recall, but I would say it's probably in that 3%. But again, I do believe you have the option to set that rate as you determine.
Really? As a council?
Potentially.
When, when, I mean, we'd have, not in reference to these, just in general. We'd have to, I could, I could look at that and bring that back.
I think we changed ordinance several years ago about, that gave the flexibility for assessment period, maybe five years, 10 years, and 20 years. And then I know we have done assessments in the past during certain projects at 0% interest.
That sounds good.
That takes, I think, a whole separate ordinance for that particular issue.
But, well, with these ones we're voting on now, if we were to want, our desire to do that, could we retroactively apply that then?
All we're doing, we're not assessing any costs tonight. This is just basically you guys are approving the resolution declaring the necessity to install the sidewalk in accordance with our ordinances and with state law. So this is the first step in an assessment process per state law. And so today, we require sidewalks to be installed on both sides of every street and avenue in the city. These arterial streets like 57th Street, for some reason, when it was installed, the sidewalk wasn't put in and completed on the south side. So all you're doing tonight is saying, we've made the determination, we're going to put sidewalk in and in the future, we have the authority to come back and assess the property owner.
All right, thank you, Chad. Any other questions for Chad? Do you have a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Second, Knightzert?
Motion approved by Kylie, seconded by Knightzert. Any discussion, counsel? Okay, we'll vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 18.
A resolution declaring the necessity to construct sidewalk on South Southeastern Avenue and assessing the costs to each lot or tract of land benefiting thereby.
All right, this project is on Southeastern Avenue between 26th and 18th Street. As you can see on the map, that yellow line on the east side is where we do not have sidewalk. You will notice that on the west side, on the west of the railroad tracks is where we have the bike trail. Again, tonight is the resolution necessity just to construct. There's no assessments associated tonight. Again, the actual assessments will be installed once the project's complete. We know the final costs. And this resolution includes the 11 parcels that we have listed, listed here. And the assessments range from about $12,000 down to about $500.
Thanks, Chad. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Chad on that item?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion approved by Counsel Selberg and seconded by Counsel Kylie. Any discussion, counsel? Okay, we'll vote on this, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 19 is a resolution declaring the necessity to construct sidewalk on West 85th Street and assessing the costs to each lot or tract of land benefiting thereby.
All right, same thing. This project is 85th Street. On the left-hand side, you have Tallgrass Avenue and on the right-hand side, you have Hughes Avenue. Couple of years ago, we built that quarter mile from Louise over to Hughes and now we're starting at Hughes and heading towards Tallgrass. So as we, as we built the 85th coming from Louise, we did install sidewalk on both sides. As we progress west to east, you can see the areas in blue and the areas in yellow where we will be installing sidewalk with this year's project. Again, the properties in yellow per city ordinance are the ones that will be assessed for the sidewalk installation. Again, the, the parcels, the lengths are up there, the prices range from about $8,500 down to $6,000.
Thanks, Chad. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Counselors, you have questions for Chad on this one? Please come forward, ma'am. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Vicki Reeve and I live in parcel, parcel three. So I had a couple of questions, I guess. One of the questions was that we're going to be having a permanent easement put on our property, meaning? meaning that the city will have access to it at all times, and our trees will be taken down, and we will not be able to plant trees or so, such in the area. So I guess part of my question is, is it, is it fair when there's a permanent easement and the property really, I don't really exactly know how it all works, but that we are being charged, it looks like approximately sixty-eight hundred dollars for sidewalk there? That's one of my questions. And the other question is that because we were rural, our septic system is in our front yard, and our leach field runs into that whole area. We've had, in the last year, we have had already our septic back up into our house with over a hundred thousand dollars of damage because of the improper drainage with the building around us with the Tuscan Estates. So we are still, our leach field now has all been fixed, but there's a concern about, we're, we're rural, right? So there's concern that I have about this sidewalk being built over this leach field. Not maybe so much the weight of the sidewalk, but the equipment that's gonna be in there that's going to be building it. So I guess I, maybe an amendment to, to wait to assess us until we know the impact on our property, the impact on our septic system. I mean, there's a lot of other things that are going into account here rather than we're just gonna build this sidewalk and you're gonna pay us for it.
Understand, I'm gonna, do you wanna speak on this too, ma'am? Were you here to speak on this, or just, you can come forward and speak, and then we'll, we'll have Chad address that.
Amy McEwen, and I'm parcel four, and I guess.
Go ahead and step up to the mic, Amy.
We just got our notices last week on Thursday, and so we haven't even had time to talk to anybody. We do have a meeting with Dina Knudsen on Friday. So we would like to have answers before you guys make a vote. So, like, the percentage of the interest rate. My notes are back there, but things like that. When does the interest rate start? Does it start from the day it's put in? Is there a guarantee of how long this sidewalk should be in good working condition before, you know, things start happening to it? Are we responsible for that? We don't know, have any answers. So we would like you to just kinda hold off a little bit until we get some answers on Friday, and then we can make some decisions, or you guys can make some decisions. Thank you.
So what we'll do is, is anyone else here to speak on this one? All right, I'll let Chad, maybe you can speak to those concerns that those homeowners have, and we can go from there.
Very good questions. So, properties three and four are not in the city of Sioux Falls. And so in this instance, if we proceed tonight with a resolution of necessity, have you guys signed the permanent easement yet, yet, okay, okay. So what that means when they're not in the city of Sioux Falls is that we would proceed with the resolution of necessity. All it does is put them on notice. It doesn't mean we're assessing them anything, and we typically cannot assess them and collect the money until they come into the city of Sioux Falls. So this would be, I would call a, we would, we would, if we proceed tonight with the resolution of necessity, which I still recommend, but because it doesn't mean we're putting any sidewalk in or assessing them any costs, what happens then when we get done with the project? They are, the property is tagged or put on notice that this assessment will be there at the time of annexation, but nothing is due until they annex into the city of Sioux Falls. And we do have similar parcels like that out on West Forty-first Street where we can't collect any of the assessment until they're actually in the city of Sioux Falls. So the, the interest rate question, none of that pertains to them until they are annexed into the city of Sioux Falls. So I, you know, I didn't, I didn't know they had any questions, and I certainly respect them, and we'll, we'll try to address everything they can, we can, on Friday. So.
Okay. So, you know what, let us, yeah, come on, come on back up, ma'am, sure.
So if they go forward, you know, with the, and even though we don't have to pay for it right away, we don't all, we also get, you're also taking away the opportunity for us to maybe hire somebody ourselves if you go forward with putting a sidewalk in. Does that make sense?
I don't think the work's gonna be done, so Chad can explain that.
No, no, you still, you still, they, everybody, all of these, all these individuals we've talked about tonight, just because this is approved, it doesn't mean that we're putting it in or they're putting it in. The decision is still out there. A lot of people will tell us, let's wait till we open the bids, we know the actual cost, and then we'll make that decision. And so we don't have to know whether they wanna do it or whether they want us to do it until we're literally there, ready to do it. And I, councillor Starr, Starr brought up a good point on Friday's agenda review that we've talked about getting sidewalk in, let's say, for example, on Southeastern Avenue for a lot of years, because we've had a lot of complaints. But when you look at that east side, there's a lot of challenges with trees, topography, grading that has to, but, has to be done. So we've, we've put it off as long as we could. So now when we do the project on Southeastern, the project will take care of the trees removal, the grading. So really, all they're paying for is, is the sidewalk. And so, again, on Eighty-Fifth Street, if they haven't signed the permanent easements, if they hadn't signed any of the easement works yet, we can't do anything on their property. The sidewalk, however, is in the public right of way. But again, they still have the option to do it themselves if they like, and they'll have that option until we're out there, ready to do the work.
Okay. Councillors, do you have questions for Chad on this? Councillor Staley?
Well, so, here's the, the situation. When we don't hear from people before the meeting, that puts a heavy burden on us to, you know, when we hear concerns, I, I haven't, I hadn't heard from anybody about these. So you just think, well, I guess it's not problematic. I didn't know you just found out about this on Thursday. Right, they said they just got notice on Thursday about this coming up?
They, I don't know when they got notice, but they, they, I would assume we've met with you before Friday. Friday isn't the first meeting we've had with you, is it? Wow.
Come on up to the, to the dice, ma'am, come on up to the mic, ma'am, so we can get at all the audio.
We met, but we didn't have any of these kind of discussions. You know, you talked that, that we would probably have a sidewalk, or, but we wouldn't be, any cost. We get this letter that states we're gonna have this cost, there'll be interest if we don't pay it within this thirty days. We don't know, only if we're annexed in, but we don't know where that interest starts. You know, does it start from the day the sidewalk's put in? You know, we don't have any answers, and none of that was discussed back then. And the things that we did discuss on the easements have been changed too, based on the letters we got. So we, we need to talk again, is what I'm saying.
And this is feeling a little bit like Matt Metzger. Sorry, Chad. Back in twenty, twenty seventeen, sixteen, the Matt Metzger pre-annexation task force situation. But there, they also mentioned that they don't know if the sidewalks are gonna influence or have an impact on their septic systems. So I think there's some, I would like a little more time just to let this breathe and maybe discuss this with them, give them, make sure that they're, all the questions are answered. They're shaking their head yes. So I, I'm gonna make a motion that we defer this to March tenth.
Could you, is there a second for that?
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion to defer this resolution to March ten and seconded by Brecky. Councillor Nitzer, do you wanna weigh in on that?
Sure, I, I would just point out that all we're doing is declaring the necessity to build a sidewalk. We're not assessing them, we're not even starting construction. It's gonna be many months down the road. It's just putting them on notice that we intend, that we believe we should build a sidewalk here. That's it. There's gonna be months where they can discuss this.
All right, councillor Brecky.
The reason I seconded the motion, you know, when there's, there's no hurry, there's no, there's nothing, there's no urgency to this, there's no reason why we can't just talk with the folks a little bit, make sure they're comfortable before we go forward. That would be, that's why I seconded.
All right, well, let's, let's take a vote then on the motion to defer to the tenth.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Give you guys enough time to meet with Chad and his team, so you guys will correspond, and, okay, great.
And if I, if I could just say, would you please keep us informed as to how the dialogue goes? I think you, Chad and the residents, thank you.
All right, item twenty.
A resolution approving the release of a permanent easement located in Lot One, Block One of Canterbury Heights, North Edition to the city of Sioux Falls and Canterbury Heights, North Edition to the city of Sioux Falls, all in Minnehaha County, South Dakota.
All right, this drainage easement is in the Canterbury Heights, North Edition, which is northwest of the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Madison Street. You can see it up there in red. I'll zoom in here. The property owner has requested the release of this easement. We have evaluated the request, determined the city no longer needs this easement for public infrastructure, and are recommending its release.
All right, thanks, Chad. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Councillors, do you have any questions for Chad on it?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Kylie, discussion? We'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, we'll move to item twenty-one.
A resolution declaring certain real property of the city surplus and authorizing the demolition and salvage thereof.
Good evening, Shelley.
Good evening, Shelley Underwood Housing Manager with the city of Sioux Falls. This resolution is to surplus one home that was acquired by the city as part of the Rose Lata flood buyout program. The home will be surplus and demolished. Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sioux Falls will be allowed to access the property and remove building components that can be salvaged prior to demolition. So I will entertain any questions. And this is a picture of the home on One Oh Five Rose that is in the resolution to be surplus and demoed.
Got it. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Councillors, do you have questions for Shelley on it?
Move approval, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Kylie, discussion? We will vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, item twenty-two.
A resolution approving the Sioux Falls Parks and Recreation Five-Year Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. Appreciate you hanging in there with us tonight. Tonight, we're presenting our comprehensive plan with a focus on the goals over the next five years, and then obviously, we're always trying to look out five years beyond that as well. I wanted to thank the mayor and city council for their interest and engagement in this planning process. I know this is like the third or fourth time we've probably been before you, but it's been a valuable planning process and certainly be helpful in shaping the future of our park system. Also wanted to thank our Parks and Rec team for their efforts on this year-long project. And then also, it's certainly a cross-departmental process that we really couldn't, couldn't have done it without, you know, planning, finance, the mayor's office, as well as city engineering. And then last but not least, I wanted to thank our Parks and Rec board, who have supported the plan along the way and sent the unanimous recommendation of the plan to the city council at their board meeting last month. To close my remarks, I would point out there, there are several goals that have emerged out of the plan. Some of them are really more focused on administrative functions that the, the staff would be able to address, like marketing our programs and services. And there's certainly others that would require council involvement, whether it be on policy or appropriating funds to achieve the goals in this plan. While they're all solid recommendations, we've asked Leon to really highlight those things that we'll really wanna engage the council going forward on. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Leon Younger. Leon's the president of Proz Consulting, and to take you through the final findings and recommendations. Leon?
Okay, thanks, Tom. Good evening, mayor and council, nice to see you again. Wanted to take you through where we left off the last time I was here on a couple of items that we basically didn't address that we said we would come back to. I just wanna remind you that, again, this is a requirement for CAPRA, and I mentioned her the last time I was here, that the Commission for Accreditation, that you're one of a hundred and seventy agencies in the United States, and there's eight thousand park systems in the United States that's accredited. So that's a really difficult thing to do and to actually follow. But your team here, professionals, have made that a priority, which is really good for the city. When we talk about the financing of the park system for the future, in the plan, we outlined a recommendation for looking at a pricing policy for the future. Currently, right now, the way you manage and operate, you operate by an ordinance. Ninety-five percent of the park system in the United States operate by a pricing policy, basically, that addresses direct and indirect costs and a cost recovery goal by type of program. And it really determines a philosophy of how you wanna deal with services as it applies to defining the type of service, whether it's a core essential, important, or value-added, how you basically address the true cost, both direct and indirect, associated with that service. And then how do you wanna basically provide that service to the community? Within that, we identified your programs, where, which would, these are your existing programs that fall into essential, which those programs typically are, have a low cost or no costs associated with them. Important programs, there's a public good and a private good associated with the service. So typically, those programs are anywhere between twenty-five to fifty percent cost recovery. And then you have a lot of value-added services, which basically are services that are mainly, the user receives the majority of the benefit, and, and the rest of the taxpayers really don't get that benefit, but as a user, you get it. So consequently, those are considered value-added. So currently, right now, within your program classifications, you have twenty-two percent are essential, important are twenty-eight percent of your programs, and fifty percent are in the value-added. So across the country and working in this business for the last forty-five years, looking at cost recovery, kind of, when you look at it from a total cost of the activity, typically, you'd see aquatic somewhere between fifty percent to a hundred percent cost recovery. And, you know, with Medco coming online, you changed a lot of your prices, basically, on those services to, on that kind of a facility, and falls within that category. Cultural arts typically forty to sixty percent. And as you can see, these, these change by the type of activity that's associated with it and people's perception of the value that they receive for that program. When we asked this question on the survey, what people said was, okay, with what falls into the core essential is that programs for special populations, program for low-income individuals typically are a hundred percent tax-supported or up to seventy-five percent tax-funded. So that your community has already addressed through the survey process how they would classify those services, of what percentage of those programs would fall into a core essential, important, or value-added, and a cost recovery goal that's associated with it. And when we evaluated your services over the last twenty-five years, there were very few programs or changes. Most of your, of your prices had not changed in twenty-five years. And so when you look at that, what it really demonstrates is that the flexibility of being able to price services based on an experience of a public good and a private good is something that we really have you, would like to see you consider moving towards to give the flexibility and creativity to the program staff and the staff who provide those services to energize your spaces. And that way, it allows the public to pick and choose what they want in terms of a service versus the way you're, you're set up now. But that's, that's a recommendation that was put in the plan. Next, we looked at your capital improvement plans. Currently, right now, your assessed valuation of the parks less land is a little, right at around two-hundred-and-forty million dollars worth of assets. And to do that, we really look at what your yearly investment is to protect two-hundred-and-forty million dollars in assets. And so currently, based on a three to four percent best practices, requires about seven, a little over seven million to nine million annually to take care of what you already own, which the majority of people really see that as a priority, and in your community was the same, okay? So when you looked at your ten-year average, you're really doing right at that level. So you, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen, recognizing you had some major efforts being built when Medco came, came. came online, you really fall within that three to four percent. So in doing that, even though the way your dollars, and this includes all funding, not just from the sales taxes, includes all of the dollars that you basically invest in your system now, including grants and other funding sources, you're really at that level, which I want to commend you. This is very difficult for most agencies to actually achieve. Next practice that we really recommend is you consider, as you look at your budgets, that 60% of your capital budgets yearly are really spent on maintaining what you already own. 20% would be looking at adding to an existing park or adding another amenity to an existing site that enhances the experience at that site. And then you have visionary projects, which would account for approximately 20%. And those visionary projects are projects like a MITCO that come on, you know, every 10 or 15 years, something significant that's, that happens to the system that really elevates, you know, your system forward. And so we are making that recommendation as part of our work. So when you look at your, currently, your capital improvement in blue is taking care of what you already own. The new investments are in the green, and then the visionary really are in the red. And again, we want to demonstrate that, that as the city continues to grow, the impact of keeping up a balance of this, and you're growing town. So those things will always be in flux, based on the growth of the city and what's important, and how people want you to invest in your park system. Currently, you have approved through the sales tax approximately $20 million in the next five years for your capital funding. Now, this doesn't take into account some recommendations that we have as well, but I want to bring those forward, but this is where you are on your sales tax at this point. One of the things we really wanted to do, we came out with four key themes for this plan, and these all tie back to the ones Sioux Falls comp plan that the city put out. And we wanted to tie this plan to that in terms of these areas. The first one is, and I'll go through these, but equitable access is a major element of the plan, that we want to demonstrate that. And through the budget process and what you've already approved, you have 5.7 million budgeted for equitable access now. The next thing is maintaining and growing the infrastructure. You've, in your budget, because you budget five years out, is you're at 10.9 million for maintaining and growing your infrastructure, and then 12.4 in year-round program, which is indoor type of improvements and year-round activities for both winter and during the year for capital investment for the future. In our recommendations, in terms of the CIP for the recommendations, the big thing here is we wanted to look at continued neighborhood park improvements, and because that was an important thing from your community's perspective, continued land acquisition for new park and trail development that follows this recommendation, and you're going to continue to move in that direction. Maintaining and growing infrastructure, the pool replacements, we went through this the last time I was here, about which pools really need to be updated, and those are need funding, but they're in the plan. And then additional elements in community parks that have neighborhood park features that, so if I live next to a community park, I still am able to get a neighborhood park feel in terms of types of amenities that would be adjacent or in a neighborhood park. Third is then looking at indoor recreation space feasibility. I mentioned to you that the school, the school sites basically operate around 40 hours a week, and they're limited in relationship to the types of activities that they have to begin looking at a different model. That model that you have in place has been working, but it's really a 1960-70 model. But the ability that you're, in our process of public improvement and discussions, people really talked about the need for more indoor space and more activities to serve wider age segment of appeal, and to be open more hours to serve your community. And also, in that process, to look at the ice rink replacement planning and actually look at refrigerator ice, so that you can actually enhance that as we move forward, as you move forward. And then advancing the development of the Parks Foundation, which we talked about the last time I was here, as adding an opportunity for people to invest in your system through different types of giving. So this is follows again what I said earlier, the priority rankings, the top things and what people are looking for in programs and across the system. Adult fitness wellness was at the top. Outdoor adventure, nature programs, canoe kayaking, travel and tourism, those were in the top five things that people are looking for across the city and by zone and planning area in the city. Same thing when we talk about walking and hiking trails, those are, again, that follows a national perspective. You guys are right, your community says it's number one or number two in priority. And looking at this, we know that trails are an important element to stay with, and you already have got a great trail system started, and part of that is your community really sees as a priority, as well as small neighborhood parks, nature areas, paved bike trails, and outdoor swimming and water park elements as priorities for the city. So moving forward then, in terms of maintaining and growing infrastructure, you already have a half-mile strategy in place for park access, ensuring neighborhood park experiences are provided in areas not served by a neighborhood park, as well as currently meeting the community's needs in development and total park acreage. Right now, you're meeting that acreage now, but as the community grows, you're going to continue to need to add parkland to be able to support that growth based on the standards you have right now. And the standard you have right now meets best practices in this, in the upper Midwest for what people have in their system. So we're reminding you that this is an ongoing need to stay up with the growth of your city. In equitable access, we talked about the establishing the trail connections to parks from neighborhoods. And really, a trail system is a park in itself, because it's a linear park, and people need to see it as that. The big thing here is establishing a policy to work with developers to provide for parks and trail development along their developments. There's no policy in place that does that now. And typically, we find that because people want trails, and trails add value to people's wanting to live in the neighborhood and settle, because it's, one, it's health and wellness-driven, it's easy access, it's safe for people and kids to basically bike to and from, school or activities, and it really helps to sell properties. So we see that as an opportunity, and right now, you guys have really been, the majority of it has been on the city. I mentioned the last time that this, you have this Emerald Necklace, which is really a powerful piece. Being able to be able to complete this over the next 20 or 30 years would be unbelievable if you could achieve it, and you've got a really good start to do that. And we really see this, and following this, you're, within that, you're supporting the five-mile or half-mile service area goal. Updating and maintaining the growth of the infrastructure, replacing Frank Olson Pool, which I mentioned the last time, is 48-years-old Keen Pool and McKinnon Waiting Pool with updated facilities. We know that that's not in the budget now for capital, but it is going to be something that the city needs to be prepared to deal with. Renovate and update the Terrace Park and Lowell Family Aquatic Center, and then looking at developing business plans for all the aquatic centers to achieve cost recovery goals consistent with community values. And then year-round programming was assess the current community center model. I mentioned earlier, there's time constraints on the buildings you have right now, looking to try to achieve a wider age segment appeal. The surveys indicate this as indoor programming is a priority. And currently, based on the population, there's a need for, at this point in your population, about 90,000 square feet of indoor space that's lacking to basically, that would meet the standards for a community your size. And what's really interesting, you're so strong on the outside programming, it's on the inside spaces where the city is really lacking the kind of resources that the public is looking for. I mentioned to you about the adult fitness and wellness programs. Well, these are your recreation centers as they are set up now for indoor space, and you can see where the gaps are. And we recognize that there are other service providers that are private within the city providing services, but from a public perspective, this is how this lays out. And then we talked about year-round programming, so providing more operational days, better, more consistent ice, really is an efficiency move on the city to look at refrigerated ice rinks. You can program it, people can come out, you can actually have activities, planned activities, because you know that the ice is good, and it also will increase your usage easily, 75% to 100% more than what you're getting now. I talked about the financing of the park system. These are just examples of cities that have park foundations, and believe me, they're, most cities your size do, and, but these are just examples. And then I want to go back to this pricing policy as an important element as you move forward. Trying to establish that as a management tool for the staff, this should really be approved through the budget process, so that when staff brings their budget, they are bringing that budget to you based on a cost recovery goal, and that staff prices based on approved policy is, gives the flexibility to maximize your spaces, as well as accessing more people to have access to your programs. So in summary, this is kind of the end of this, is equitable access to parks and improvements, looking at neighborhood park improvements for the future, continued land acquisition for new parks, maintaining and growing your infrastructure, your pool replacement program to put that into motion, program additional elements into community and regional parks in terms of amenities that are neighborhood-type amenities in community parks, looking at year-round programming, so by 2025, your needs will be up to 115,000 square feet of indoor space. Ice rink replacement planning to actually look at refrigerated ice, advancing this park foundation goal that would help you in your capital funding, but also bring resources to the system, as well as advocacy, and then looking at a cost recovery program using a fee ordinance and the cost recovery versus using an existing fee ordinance and the completion of a cost of service assessment, which really is an eye-opener for most agencies when you really look at what it costs to produce a service. So those, that in summary is what this plan is, addition to what I presented the last time I was here. How's that?
That's great Leon. Thank you, and thank you to your team for all the work you've done with the city on this. I'm going to open it up to public input, see if anyone wants to speak on this one tonight. Then we'll move into any questions that our council may have for Leon or our Parks team. Counselor Staley?
Leon, thank you. Now, I listened carefully in the past when you spoke, Leon. This is the first time the cost recovery goal has really jumped out at me. And I'm thinking what you're really saying there in some different words is that you want us to raise our rates.
No, it's not that. I think that your rates are, at the majority of your rates are at a low cost or no cost, and that there are a lot of your services that are, have private elements in them that you are not charging, that you could be if you wanted to.
Like what kind of services?
When people have private access to a facility, so if I, when I have, when I'm able to make money off of a city facility at no cost, you have to ask yourself, why aren't you doing that?
Swim team, yes, I hear, I know where you're going with that. So just for the record, I, well, let me ask you this question. How many municipalities can you list that don't charge any fee for swimming?
Very few.
But can you list some?
There are some. Usually in very, very hot communities, they do. But it depends on, and a lot of times, it's during the time of the day. So they still charge, but it'll be at certain times of the day they have no cost. And so part of it is, is a, instead of people turning on water hydrants, they let the pools open for a period of time, and it varies based on what part of the country you're in.
Well, like, I gave the example, we were in San Antonio for a convention, and they said they don't charge. Actually, I would think that would be more cost, burdensome when you're a year-round pool provider for them versus us when we're doing it.
Well, go ahead.
But, okay, so, but for the record, I think that, from what I hear from the public, we acknowledge that offering swimming to, and I'm talking about swimming because that's a passion of mine, but offering swimming as an experience to our children is very important. And we never, I don't, I don't know that anyone in this council is ever going to say, we're going to have to, you know, get as much revenue from these kids as we can to make them pay for the operational costs. We're willing to subsidize that.
My point about that is, you choose what you want to subsidize, but the thing is, not all of your services need to fall into that category.
I get it. Yes, I hear that. I understand. The second thing, Leon, I'm just using you as our expert witness here. That Leon has said several times that music is played at pools across the nation, right, Leon? It's a good thing. I'm hoping that our, Don Kearney hears that, that we will allow that, that wonderful experience to happen. You didn't talk about pools on the south side of town, and since we had our conversation the first time you came, I put that on Facebook, I've been putting it out there. There is a need in our town for that kind of an amenity for those kids. And there's been talk that, well, we, most of those kids over there have their own pools in their backyards. I don't think that's accurate. And actually, then you're having a discrimination against them because of their economic classification. So those kids deserve to have a pool, they can ride their bikes too, just like any other part of our town. And then lastly, Leon, well, two more things. Trails to neighborhood parks, are you advocating that we have trails through neighborhoods, leading somehow?
Connecting neighborhoods, or typically, trails are out of subdivisions. Trails are usually a link from a subdivision to a spine trail, is a, as an element of a park system. And what a lot of cities try to do is they really frame their park system out by the accessing of trails from neighborhoods to spine trails, so people can ride freely through the city without any interference of traffic. Because when you're on a road, those are really adult trails. I mean, you're not, most parents don't want their kids out on the street on a bike trail on a street, but they do when it's a trail through a neighborhood or linking a neighborhood to a spine trail.
That would be having them work with the planning department then, for new developments. Did you do any kind of an assessment on the usage of our parks? I have had people make comments that, like, for example, Sherman Park, you know, that's, that they don't see anybody in the parks. They might see somebody at the picnic shelter, but, and maybe on this playground equipment here and there, but people are not going to the parks like they used to.
Well, I think sometimes, this is my opinion, but I really think you activate parks by two things. One, the types of amenities in our parks, if I'm only, if I have amenities that are targeted to a certain age group, and that's the only age group that basically is, you know, that's involved, then it's going to be a limited number of people who go there. The more that you add attractions or amenities to a park, the more ability you're going to attract more people to it. The other thing is to host different types of activities and programming the park energizes people to use it. And so a lot of times, just because you build it, doesn't mean they're going to come. And the intent is, it's the activation of the program that really drives energy into your park system.
Well, so that would be good to have you break down, you know, what those amenities are.
It's in the plan. We listed all of the amenities that a typical neighborhood park could actually have, and I know in the past, there's been, your standards and guidelines have been mainly six to seven, maybe eight different amenities within a neighborhood park, and we've made some recommendations to expand that in the plan.
And I noticed tennis is, I was surprised tennis is down on the list, from our, the response of our P-
Well, what's happened is pickleball's picked up tennis. I mean, at one time, there was 33 million people playing tennis, it dropped down to 11, it's backed up to 18 million now. But the big thing is pickleball has picked up as a major element of players who are older, but now it's becoming, it's going to be Olympic sports, so consequently, you're going to see a lot of kids playing pickleball as well. And they play on tennis courts.
Counselor Nitzer, I'm going to share the discussion here a little bit. You have some questions for Leon?
Yeah, I do have a few comments, but basically, my big question, and I will, I did not read it cover to cover, but I read a lot of it, read the highlight parts. So my main question, and this kind of goes to my takeaways, do you think that given our funding sources, whatever it is, user fees- our funding sources, whatever it is, user fees, taxes, that we are taking in enough right now, that we are investing enough to do the things that you say we should do, which is we should be taking so much reinvesting into the capital, we should do the visionary projects, and we should do capital?
You guys have been doing a fantastic job. Fantastic. All I'm saying is, is that the intent of being able to keep up with it, because you have a lot of other priorities, and I recognize that, you're trying to build a, you know, continue, I mean, when you have this many people coming into your town every day and every year, you're keeping up with that infrastructure is hard. And the big thing is, it's fun to build new, but taking care of what you already own. And right now, you've done a good job. I'm enormously impressed with how well you've been able to fund this system.
Well, and I, I think we've, the park system is a gem too, but I guess the difficult question is if we're, if, if we are to look at, for example, cost recoveries, again, the question is, is granted, we're doing a good job, but are you telling us that we need to put more, are we putting enough money into those three buckets? Or are we?
On the capital end, you have been, over the last 10 years, in those three buckets, yes. What you have approved right now for the next five years is in bucket one and two. But in the new, actually enhancements or the new visionary pieces, those dollars are not yet allocated. And we're making a recommendation that those replacement pools or facilities that are needed, that you do make that initial effort. But I realize that money, that you just can't say it, if, you know, that you just do it, where we're making a recommendation that you should, if the dollars are available.
Are those pools visionary projects in your mind?
Yes, because they're completely replacements.
Okay.
And when, you know, it's one thing to add a spray ground to a pool, that's, that's in a bucket too. But when you're total replacement, those are really new. And typically, when you do that, you also make improvements to the park that's associated with it because you're, you're changing the makeup of the way that facility looks.
And here's my biggest takeaway as I read it. There's a lot of big needs and also wants, of course, all of these pools to replace, a lot of these other major projects, there's a lot, people want a lot more bike trails. It's a lot of money, but it's also competing with, we have roads.
Right.
We have floods, we have, drainage is a major issue. And so I think, I think the takeaway I got from this is we do need to be brave enough to take a look at everything across the board and see, does something need an adjustment? Because I don't, I'm not sure how with all of the roads we have to do and everything else, how we're supposed to be able to build all of these new pools, all of these new bike trails in any reasonable amount of time unless we look and we really decide, does anything need to be adjusted?
Well, here's my point. I am amazed that you got 48 year, 48 years out of some of your facilities, especially in a cold weather town. You're lucky. It only takes one, but if you look at the map and how your, those pools are distributed, one pool goes down, that whole section of the city is without. And I think you just have to be recognizing that that could happen, okay? I'm not saying it's going to happen, I'm just saying it could happen. It's a reality.
Other questions for Leon? Councilor Kylie?
Thank you, Leon. The report is very well labeled as comprehensive because it isn't extremely comprehensive. And I like Councilor Nicer, I haven't read all 233 pages, but I've gone through much of it and scanned through it. In fact, I find one of the more interesting bar graphs in, is on the very last page where it addresses satisfaction with quality of parks and facilities. Nationally, it's 85%, and for Sioux Falls, it's 96%. So we're 9% above national average. Satisfaction with quality of programs and activities, we're at 92% nationally at 89%, so they were about 3% above. And my question comes with the satisfaction with overall value received. Now, I mean, we're at 96 and 92, but now satisfaction with overall value received has drops at 84. You would think it's somewhere between the 92, 96, but it drops to 84. But we are much better than the national average, which sits at 61%. I mean, we, 23% above national average, but where's that disconnect?
I think it's in the, you have, your parks are your signature pieces, and you've got some really signature parks, okay? But having wide age segment appeal in parks, which is great, but having it indoors, I think the gap is really in indoor services. And I think that really shows up in the plan, it shows up in all the surveys, it shows up in our public process, that that's the area of the park system that's, doesn't have the same level of commitment as outdoor space does.
Good answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Staley?
Excuse me. Specifically, were you talking about our lane rental fees?
No, I wasn't talking about that.
The indoor, the indoor pool?
No, I think you're doing better than most indoor pools at Medco, and I think you've exceeded what the original estimate was for, for level of cost recovery on that facility currently right now, based on the, the pool report that's part of this plan that was done by Councilman Hunsinger.
Well, so, well, an $800,000 subsidy, so that's going to be an ongoing cost. I will say that my hometown of Mowbridge, that's in the northern part of our state, two years ago, they built a new pool, and I was involved with the Drake Springs Pool. We built that for 4.7 million back in 2007. But Mowbridge built a pool, huge, and I call, I got, beautiful, slides, all, three different types of pools within this, this facility. And when I got home, I called them and I said, tell me what you paid for that pool, okay, up in Mowbridge. The gal, this 2000, this is 2017. She said, now Teresa, remember, we're out in the boon docks. We're way far away, so we had to pay top dollar for our pool. You know what they paid for it, Leon? 3.3 million. Moral of that story to me is we can do it, we can do it, I don't want to say cheaper, but less expensive. We can do it smart. But if you say 3.3 million, 4 million to replace these pools, that's really, in the big scheme of things, isn't, isn't that cost burdensome for our town?
You know, Councilor, one of the things we talked about the last time I was here is when you're looking at water, there are four types or five types of water. There's flat water, which is really for fitness and, and swim team, competitive water. Then you have moving water, which is all your slides and that kind, and you have warm water, which basically is for little kids and spray grounds, and you have zero-depth activities.
Yes.
And you have therapy water. And so having those combination of water, whether it's indoor or outdoor, really brings the maximum amount of use. And I don't know this facility you're talking about, but if they've had different levels of water, it really makes a big difference in terms of who goes there and what it costs.
Thanks, Leon. Councilor Seale?
Thank you, Mr. Mead. I think I might have one correction for you. You forgot about hard water.
No, no, I'm, did I say hard water?
We need a curling facility in the worst way in Sioux Falls, so I just thought I'd bring that up.
I'm sorry if I said that. I can't believe I said that.
Councilor, Councilor Nicer, do you have another question for Leon?
Yeah, one more. You touched on community centers, that it was maybe, I don't know, outmoded model, whatever. What, what do you think we could be doing with our community centers and better, and do we use those, or do we go to a completely different facility for indoor?
Well, they're working right now as really an after-school program in a summer facility, but they're not open on the weekends, okay? So, you know, the number one recreation day in America is Sunday, and you're not open, okay? So, you know, I'm just to let you know that, you know, when you look at these things, how do people use those facilities? They're really an after-school center, or they're really for, there's some activity that occurs in there, but they weren't really, they're not designed to be multifunctional. They're really designed to be more of an after-school experience and some programming that are in them. Typically, you know, you've, you have some facilities that are private facilities now that have attributes of what a, a community center would typically include.
And I think you touched on this, but I've noticed they've kind of turned into a de facto daycare.
Yep.
Right or wrong, I mean, they just have.
I mean, you're basically helping parents because they don't have to pick up their kids till after work.
Thanks.
Other questions for Leon or a motion to make on this? Councilor Staley?
One more thing, Leon. We, have you heard about these concrete ping pong tables?
Yes.
We, actually, the, the Park Department graciously agreed to buy three of them. Now, we're talking about things to put in a park. Hopefully, we're going to experiment with that, and those kinds of things could draw people in too. Have you found those around the country to be?
Well, typically, they're in a very urban setting, and, and the biggest issue is having somebody who can handle, and, and either you bring your paddles to the, or somebody's got to handle the nets. And usually, there's somebody locally that you get your net, you just walk over and they give you the nets, because a lot of people like to steal the nets. And so consequently, that's always an issue.
I thought the nets were made out of a solid material.
You can, you can buy them both ways.
Okay.
But I'm just, the way it's set up.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Move to approve.
Second, Brecky.
All right, I have a motion to approve this item by Councilor Kylie and seconded by Brecky. Is there discussion amongst the council on this? See none, or we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nicer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Seale?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero.
Can I make one more comment?
You sure can.
I'd just like to thank the staff, and I've never worked with a group of people who are so engaged in this process, and I can only honestly tell you, they know everything about this plan. There's nothing in it that they don't get, and I just want to say that, and thank you for the opportunity to work with you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. Councilors, any new business?
Move to adjourn. Starr?
Second.
All right, motion adjourned by Councilor Starr and seconded by Councilor Erickson. All those in favor, say yes. Oppose?
No.
All right, it's still carried, we are adjourned. Thank you.